Okay, we still have people joining the call, so thanks, everybody. Okay. Looks like we've leveled out on people joining the calls, so we'll go ahead and get started. So, item 1.1 is call to order of open session. I would like to call to order the June 24th, 2020 Governing Board of Trustees Regular Meeting at 4:33 PM. By law and board policy, I must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. The Governor of California has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, aka coronavirus. The Governor issued Executive Order N 2520, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The Executive Order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference and video calls while still satisfying state transparency requirements. The Governor has also issued Executive Order N 3320, prohibiting people from leaving their homes or places of residence except to access necessary supplies and to service and services or to engage in specified critical infrastructure employment. Public health and well-being are top priority for the Delmar Union School District Governing Board of Trustees, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. To facilitate this process, the meeting of the Governing Board has been made available on the district's website. Members of the public who would like to address the Governing Board regarding items on the agenda must go to the link provided on the agenda online. The link can be found on the front page of the agenda. Item 1.3 to be heard... I get you. Choose item 1.3 to be heard regarding a closed-session agenda item. 4.2 to be heard regarding an item not on the agenda. Or item 5.5 to be heard regarding an item on the agenda. Please complete and submit the online request to public comment link form, a form at the link provided. Once you have submitted the form and joined the Zoom meeting, please click on Raise Hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen on your computer, or if you're dialing in, dial * to raise your hand. This will let the meeting moderator know that you have submitted a speaker form we'd like to address the board. Please do not click the Raise Hand option unless you plan to address the board and have completed the request form. If you are unable to access the live link, please email. This is a new name, welcoming Megan Bennett, at two N's, two T's, at Megan Bennett, or M Bennett, at dmusd.org. Item 1.2, roll call. I will now take roll call of board members who are present at this meeting. Member Raffner.
Present.
Member Mock.
Present.
Member Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Member Wooden.
Present.
And I'm present. All Governing Board members are present. Item 1.3 is public input concerning items on the closed-session agenda, and we have none. Item 1.4 is adjournment into closed session. The Governing Board will adjourn into closed session. The Zoom meeting will remain open. This board, the board reconvene, the board will reconvene and join this open session when a closed session is adjourned at approximately 5:45 PM. The closed-session topics are 2.1, evaluation of an employee, Holly McClurg, Superintendent. 2.2, evaluation of an employee, Kathy Burks, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Item 2.3, evaluation of an employee, Shelley Peterson, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. Item 2.4, evaluation of an employee, evaluation of Jason Romero, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. 2.5, conference with labor negotiator. 2.6, conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Government Code Section 54956.9, D1, One Case, Save the Field versus Delmar Union School District. Okay, and with that, we will convene into closed session.
So we have 101, huh? We have 100 attendees.
Hi, everybody. We're still loading. Okay, we're all in the call. We're just waiting for GWAT to rejoin. And it looks like we have everybody else in the call.
I think we get more of a turnout on these meetings than we do in person.
We do.
Okay, everybody, just stand by while we wait for a couple more folks to join. Thanks for your patience, everyone. We're just waiting for a couple more people. Okay. Looks like we have everybody here. So, it's, we're on item 3.1, reconvene of open session. Open session reconvened at 6:09 PM. 3.2, reported action taken in closed session. The Governing Board met in closed session, and I would like to report the following action taken in closed session. The Governing Board has determined that goals progress as required by employment agreements for superintendent and assistant superintendents have been met. As specified in the employment agreements, the Board approved goals related to performance compensation regarding the evaluation of Superintendent Holly McClurg and Assistant Superintendents Kathy Burks, Shelley Peterson, and Jason Romero. Item 3.3, pledge of allegiance. Holly, will you please lead us in our remote pledge of allegiance? And you're muted.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item 3.4 is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick? I can hear you. Did you say aye?
Sorry, aye.
Okay. Member Wooden?
Aye.
Okay, and I approve. The motion to approve the agenda has passed. Item 4.1, correspondence.
Good evening. The Superintendent's Office has received the following correspondence regarding district business. Inquiries related to COVID-19, including emails regarding student relocation during the school year, inquiries regarding the summer camp program, inquiries regarding the thought exchange survey and distance learning, and regarding summer learning activities. Also, correspondence regarding prioritizing racial justice in children's education, regarding STEAM+ teachers, requests to, about items at Delmar Heights as far as pieces that will be, remain with the facilities or not, and regarding the Ocean Air staff, praise for acts of kindness. That concludes the correspondence for the month.
Thank you. Item 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now address members of the public who have requested to speak on items that are not on the agenda. And while we're loading in our first two speakers, which are, who are Shannon Fetter and Sandeep Patel. I'll just remind you that if you have submitted a request to speak, you also need to raise your hand in the participant list so that we can see you and patch you into the call. Those of you who attended our last two meetings heard what I said about public comments, but I will again repeat a few points here. The Board values the high level of engagement from the community and welcomes public input. We all want to get the best decisions on behalf of the children in our district, and I encourage you to bring your best selves to this discussion and choose to demonstrate civility in your comments. So with that, Shannon, go ahead. I can't, Shannon, I can't hear you. You have to turn muted still. There we go. Hear me now? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for this time to speak. I have a child who has an IEP, and during this period of school closure, we received maybe approximately 10% to 20% of the services that he would normally have had were school-in session. So during this time that school was closed and we were distance learning, he got very little of his IEP services. What I'm wondering is, what will IEP services look like in the fall? Do you anticipate that kids will get their full IEP services or only partial services? Could you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. So, and during public comment, we can't respond directly. Our choices are to refer you to staff, and, which I can do in this case, and also some of the topics that you're raising may be relevant to an upcoming agenda item later in the agenda. But there's, we can't respond directly during the public comment period.
Are you, what staff can you refer me to?
Dr. McClurg.
Dr. McClurg, okay.
I'm gonna ask staff, I'm gonna ask staff to follow up with you on this.
Okay, I want to say that it's important, because I have decisions that need to be made with timelines, and I need to make an informed decision. And it's, I think, I speak for all parents who have children with IEPs, who probably also received a massive reduction in their services during this time, that it's important for us to know, will our children be getting their full services in the fall? So I, I just want to bring that to the Board's attention.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. I appreciate that. We're gonna go to the next speaker, who is Sandeep Patel.
Apologies, I think I'm supposed to be for item 9.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so then we still have Amy Catarina for 4.2, and Matthew Rawl. And so if those two speakers would like to speak on a non-agenda item, we can put you in the call. Okay, Amy Catarina, there you go. Yep.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Amy Catarina, and I'm a founding member of San Diego Schools. We're an advocacy group established to help parents make their voices heard in improving education in our county. Our goal is to improve transparency, accountability, and equity in the school districts throughout the county. There are over 500,000 kids in our county, and they deserve the best education possible. And while we're living in different, difficult times, all school districts are facing serious challenges ahead. Delmar Union's budget is likely to see significant changes over the coming year, and parents need to have a voice in making sure those cuts do not hurt the education of their children. This summer, there's nothing more important to parents than their district's plans for reopening the fall. Parents need to have a voice in that plan. We've seen so much turmoil over policing issues. We need parents to be involved in how school site policing is handled. Our district needs to provide assistance and advocate on behalf of involved parents. The best interests of our kids need to come first in every decision made. The volunteers at San Diego Schools can help parents to better understand how their school district operates and get involved with their district to make things better and ultimately get the most value for their students' education. Education is a complex thing. There are many varied aspects of public education that are a mystery to the community. We aim to provide relevant and timely information to help clarify that and to help parents see the impact on policy and procedure in their schools. We will have community-based learning opportunities such as webinars, Zoom meetings, and discussions on diverse topics like what is the role of a D-PAC? And how does the LCAP process give us input into funding in our schools? We hope that parents will gain a better understanding of how education works to help them participate in that process. We have established a website at san diegoschools.net and a related Facebook group, San Diego Schools, intended to act as a central hub for information, giving parents and students the ability to find and resolve problems. Everyone is encouraged to visit our site, san diegoschools.net, sign up for our email list, and join the Facebook group to stay in the loop on upcoming events and activities. Parents and students deserve a voice in their child's education. We hope to forward, we, we look forward to working with parents in school districts and Delmar Union toward that end. Putting kids first should be the first priority in educatious, in education. Join us and help make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matthew Rawl, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm a parent. I have three children over at Sycamore Ridge, and I live right behind the school. And the DMUSD camp is, has closed the Sycamore Ridge School from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And this is the only green space that my children have, and most of the kids in the, in the neighborhood. And the reality is that I literally look over the school, and there are probably, during the day, anywhere from 10 to 15 kids total that are actually in this camp, that are running around this massive space that is now closed off. So we started a change.org petition to see if there was an opportunity to partition off even a small portion of the, of the area. Even if it was just a soccer field, so that the kids in the neighborhood here would have the opportunity to play on that, on the school grounds. And I think particularly during this period of time with the pandemic, shutting down the entire school area for such a small number of kids is ridiculous. So, we, we've had, I guess, 120 signatures. And, and really, we just want some portion of that, of that school area to be open so that the children in this neighborhood can enjoy that space.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. I'm gonna also ask Dr. McClurg to follow up with you on that topic.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and that is the end of our public comment on non-agenda items. So that brings us to item 5.1, DMC TA report, David Skinner. Followed by Phoebe Castle. David, you're in the call. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thanks, President Halper and members of the Board and Dr. McClurg. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. On behalf of the teachers, we are about two weeks past wrapping up our school year, and I have to say that for our teachers, as well as for the families and students, this was a real bittersweet ending. Saying goodbye and good luck by Zoom just doesn't do it. And I think one of the things that our teachers are most looking forward to about fall is to be able to say goodbye for this year for the students that we had. We look forward to that. Obviously, that you know as well as I do that the summer is definitely an anxious one. Our teachers are definitely anxious about what, what things are going to look like next year, and anxious to participate in that process. Also, this is, this is my last meeting as President of the DM TA. Kevin Kuhn has been elected our new president, and will be taking over next month. As a reward, I actually am not wearing a tie this evening, which is the first board meeting I've not worn a tie to, so. But it's been an honor to represent the teachers of the district in meetings. Myself, all of us, really appreciate the leadership that all of you have given to our district these past few months. You've made some very difficult decisions. We appreciate, though, that you've taken the time to be as informed as you possibly can be before making them. And going forward, we're confident that, that we're in good hands, that you will continue to make the best possible decisions for all concerned, to preserve the programs and the really quality situation that our students have. Thank you all, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you, you and. Phoebe Castle?
Good evening, President.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Hi, everyone. I'm members of the Board and Dr. McClurg. It's great to see all of you. And I, I come bearing some, some good news with everything that has gone on this year. We're very proud of, of our community and of, of our Board at the Delmar Schools Education Foundation. While it wasn't a year that any of us expected, and particularly at the end of the year, right? Where we normally would have had our, our jockathons that bring our whole community together and, and do manage to raise, you know, a lot for, for our incredible STEAM teachers. Even without that, our, our Board got the news yesterday that we were able to raise $1.2 million this year, which, you know, we're, we're very, we're thrilled with, given everything that is going on. And it just shows the, the incredible generosity of our community and their commitment to STEAM and to our incredible schools. So, we were able to, with that, with that, that level of fundraising, be able to write a check to the district, which I have. I do have the big check, and it's going to be for $1.1 million. So we're thrilled, and we're presenting this on behalf of the entire Board, but it is here. So I got to bring it to my house. But yes, we're, we're, we're very excited, and we do hope that it, it just ensures that we have a, a great STEAM program and a strong, robust program for next year for all of our students. So, thank you all for your support. You know, we cannot do it without this, the fantastic district that we have and this, and this fantastic school board. So, thank you all, and yes, hope to see you all soon.
Thank you, Phoebe, and huge thank you to you and the team for all the work you've done, especially at this really difficult time. So, we, we are in awe that you have kept going this long and pushed through and done some impressive fundraising, even given the times.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, we are looking forward to next year and hopefully, yes, bringing the community together in different ways, but keeping all this momentum going for, for our, for our schools and for STEAM. So thank you, thank you, President Halper.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we're gonna have Board member reports. And, you know, usually I start because I summarize all of our activities over the course of the month. And since that's not really happening now, I think, so let's just go ahead and start. I'll just go last. And so we'll have Member Raffner start with the board comments. Wait, you're muted.
Sorry, I usually push my spacebar, and it, it allows me to speak. I guess my computer didn't want me to talk. We've gotten together so often with these Zoom meetings and with large numbers of the community. I feel like I know everybody at this point. It saddens me that after all that we've gone through, we end up with a lawsuit filed and potential delays in, in everything that we've worked so hard to achieve. I understand the positions of all parties, but at this point, we've got to look at the kids and what's best for their education. And that's what I'm here for, and I'll keep my eyes on that. As we move forward, nobody knows what's gonna happen. And all I can say is that I, I can tell the community that we are gonna do what is safest for the children and continue to do that. All of us have children as well and feel the way that you do. So, always, as Jim Peabody has told us, keep the students first, and you can't go wrong. That's what I intend to do, and I, I know that my colleagues here will, will do the same. As we enter into the summertime, I wish everybody a, a good summer. I'm not sure if vacations are very much on anybody's agenda, but if it is, to some extent, if you can, be safe, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Member Mock?
Thanks. In light of recent events and demonstrations involving Black Americans, I think it's necessary for me to take some time to address these issues that brought forward so much underlying pain in our country. Appreciate Dr. McClurg's message to communicate, communicate, indicating her desire to address injustice in the classroom and to have age-appropriate discussions. I applaud and echo those steps. I take this issue very seriously. When issues of systemic racism are raised, we literally are part of the system. What our children learn now could take them to shaping their worldview as adults. It's absolutely crucial that we educate our students in a manner that teaches them to seek fairness and equality for all in the world, particularly given our relative lack of socioeconomic diversity. Is it that much more important that our students understand the situation of others in the country and our world? Our mission is to ignite genius and empower students to advance the world. How can our children grow up to be leaders and not have a solid understanding of the people and their histories around them? Children's in other school districts naturally have these conversations, if out of nothing else, the necessity. But here where our community is more privileged and racial and socioeconomic differences are more limited, we truly have to make a concerted effort to inform our students. The uncomfortable conversations need to happen now so they can become less uncomfortable when they encounter these issues as adults. I believe it's our obligation to promote equity and address inequalities due to racism. I believe it's our obligation to educate future leaders who seek a more just, equal, and fair society. We should always celebrate diversity of cultures, ethnicities, and heritage in all various forms. And I look forward to seeing the continued steps that Dr. McClurg and our staff will implement to educate our students and create a more just society. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Fitzpatrick?
Hi, good evening. Yesterday, it just so happened that I was on two board-related Zoom, and not just Zoom, WebEx was the other one. So I branched out from Zoom finally. But one was the book club that I'm involved in for fellow board members from around North County. And the other was actually getting to sit in on the DMSEF board meeting. And both were, were just great, such great learning opportunities for me. And it's just awe-inspiring. All inspiring to see people working so hard for kids. And I really like being in the board book club because there's some board members, um, in there that have. Been serving on those boards for decades. So it's, um. Very insightful to hear their perspective on things and just again to gain insight into what's going on in neighboring districts. And I applaud you, uh, for your statement just now. I think it's definitely a timely. Topic that schools can really take a deep dive into and focus on. And we can incorporate parents, community members. And of course, our kids into the discussion of racial equality. And. How we go about doing it, I think, uh, the best way is to involve as many stakeholders as possible. And with, uh, the D M S E F. Board meeting, it was great hearing all their forward thinking and planning for the upcoming school year. It's all so uncertain, as we all know, and so it's again really important just to keep an open mind and keep. A broad perspective on how we go about fundraising and how we go about, um. Keeping the momentum going and, and keeping that inclusive feeling for all families in the district. So, um. I, again, I feel fortunate to have been able to participate in those two events yesterday and, um, thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Wooden.
Thanks, I'll keep it short. Uh, I appreciate the comments from the other board members. I, I know back, it was, I think, March thirteenth when everything got shut down. I couldn't imagine that we would be in this spot today here at the end of June and even News, uh, Governor Newsom today was talking about. How we might reimpose a lot of these shutdowns. So I know it's a concern for a lot of the parents. I know Dr. McClurg, uh, really. Believes the students should be in class because that's how they're going to learn the best. And we're gonna try to do that as much as possible and believe me, uh, we do look after the kids and we want to make sure that. They stay safe and we're not going to do anything, uh, in terms of the fall that's not going to be safe for our students. So, uh, I just want to reassure the parents on that because we've had a lot of concerns, a lot of questions. We do not know what it's gonna look like this fall. And there's a lot of, and I wouldn't, like I said, I didn't think it would be in this spot today, still doing Zoom meetings for the, for the board. Uh, but here we are. And so I can't predict what the fall is going to look like. We're taking it as we can. And a lot of that's going to come with what the governor and our local health officials will say we can or cannot do. Uh, and I, I know that and I know our school, um, our, our superintendent and our officials will do the best they can to get the students open. And as the parents are questioning about I E Ps and other things, it is, it's important for those students to get back in class and, and to. Uh, and to get the services that they want and I, I understand that. Uh, so, uh, just hang on. We're gonna try to do it the best we can, uh, and we'll get the information as soon as we can. I know that. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I also want to take a moment to briefly address the issues of systemic racism that have been raised in demonstrations across the country and now the world. I would just say that at this time, more than ever, all of our institutions should turn a magnifying glass on themselves. To review their own practices and ensure racial equality. Certainly, school districts have a critical role in helping us raise children in an inclusive environment grounded in racial awareness and sensitivity. I would love an opportunity to discuss this as an agenda item at a board meeting. I would propose that this be included on the July board meeting agenda. Where we can, um, hear an update from the district and everything that's going on and get input from the community and have that dialogue that we need to have as a community. Also, I've been dreading the moment when we have to say goodbye to our beloved administrative assistant, Holly Palmer. It's honestly hard to imagine how the district will run without Holly. I have known her since long before I was a board member and for almost a decade, she has been my first call for virtually any question or request having to do with the district. I know that it's the case for many people because her phone is always ringing and her email box is always full. And yet she manages to always be responsive and helpful. She juggles an absolutely endless number of details and never seems to drop the ball. I am constantly in awe of the friendly and positive demeanor that she maintains even in the most difficult or stressful circumstances. Holly, we will truly miss you and we wish you a wonderful retirement. I'm just glad you will still be here for, for a few more days, so we don't have to say our final goodbyes. And welcome to our new administrative assistant, Megan Bennett. Welcome to you. You already know you have big shoes to fill, but I know you're up for the challenge. Thank you for taking on this role, especially at this very challenging and complicated moment in time. That concludes board comments and we will turn to the superintendent's report.
Good evening again. I too want to wish Holly Palmer the best in her retirement. We have worked alongside one another for many years and anyone who is fortunate enough to know Holly Palmer. Is fortunate enough to love her and have her in your life. And she has forever changed mine professionally and personally with her gracious ways. She is kind always. She's incredibly efficient. She's so wise. She has utmost integrity. She's always professional. And she's always, always positive and there for people. And I will miss her greatly. I know she's listening right now. And, uh, I know that, um, our board president and I speak on behalf of our entire district to say a huge thank you. Huge congratulations on an incredible career and, um, for all of the lives that you've touched. Um, adults and children, we owe you a world of gratitude and our hearts are open. And we're giving you virtual hugs and telling you we wish you the best in your retirement. And we know we'll get to see you again. We'll invite you back for some of the exciting things we have in our future, Holly. So thank you, um, for all that you've done for our district. We have had a lot. We have had a lot going on in our district. I do participate in meetings throughout the week. They are with the, the public health officials. I actually had a meeting this morning with our, um, Human Health and Services Agency for San Diego County. I had a meeting with our local school districts, our feeder districts in San Diego and San Diego. I have weekly meetings with the cap, of the, the county superintendents throughout the county. To keep us up to date on dealing with all that we have to deal with, um, regarding the COVID nineteen. Pandemic and response. So, um, you will hear a lot more about that as we move through our presentations later in. This, this board meeting. We have had virtual promotions and drive-by and all sorts of wonderfully creative ways to. Say congratulations to our sixth graders. And we know they'll do wonderful things in middle school and we wish all of you the best. Again, we're sending you virtual hugs and we know you'll continue to make us proud in middle school and we love hearing about the great things our Delmar students. Do when they go to middle school and high school and have wonderful futures. So. Great job and thank you for all that you've done for all of our kids and you're leaving legacies. At our schools and all of the younger children. So they're probably not listening right now, but I hope we have ways to spread. That to our sixth graders that they have got big shout-outs tonight at the school board meeting. We are very, very proud of you and grateful for you. It has been mentioned that we are focused greatly on eradicating racism and promoting social justice. Um, we know that this is not one conversation. It's not one year. It's not one committee. It's actually a commitment that we have to doing this together. And we also understand and take on the enormous responsibility. Of knowing the influence that we all have collectively as educators, as parents and as community members to influence. Not only our, our counterparts as adults, but influence generations to come. And we, um, take that very seriously and know that we have. The opportunity to actually make a big difference. We've already begun having important conversations. Been in contact with the local Anti-Defamation League to participate in the No Place for Hate education initiative. We actually are developing plans to engage in staff anti-bias training. That will give us a foundation for exploring bias and its impact on individuals and society. We know that a lot, you know, this really begins with our adults. And how we approach this and, um. And our own feelings and our own experiences with all of this. So. Um, with all that, the health and safety of our children is the highest priority. We think about that a lot of times in terms of. You know, the physical wellbeing of every child. And this also speaks to the socially emotional health of every child and our responsibility. To help raise well-rounded, um, children who really are positive, um, contributor, contributors. In, in our society now and throughout their lives. So, um, we are, we are looking forward to that important work. And we all know that there are many important issues that are concerning to each of us right now. A lot of them have already been mentioned here. On this meeting and in other board reports. And one common thing that I know that we all share is our love for our own children. And our care for each other's children. And the district has so many important projects occurring right now as we speak. And how we plan and how we move forward with each one is important to our kids. And as we're navigating through a world health crisis with a world pandemic. Um, we have, I just talked about eradicating racism and promoting social justice. We've got a new distance learning, um, program. And curriculum, Spanish immersion program. We've got major building projects. And at the heart of, and that's just to name some, at the heart of all of that is the enormous responsibility that each one of us has to do. What is best for our children. And as we work through these huge issues, I know that people are not always going to be one hundred percent in agreement with every decision and every next step. But I want this community to know that there is an unwavering commitment. To always working together and to listening to each other and to base decisions on the best information we have. And then to proceed with what we believe is best for our students. So I encourage you to be a part of it. And, and just to, to talk with us, be a part of our outreach, um, let us know your thoughts. Uh, we make the best decisions when we have all of the information. Um, we all care. No one has a personal interest in doing anything other than what's best for our kids. And I, I have to say, I'm blessed, very blessed to have a team in this district that's made up of individuals. Who are so informed about the issues. They're so smart. They're thoughtful in planning. And they're really resolute, getting back to what was mentioned earlier by a board member. And doing what's best for kids and our community as a whole. So with all that we have to think about right now, I know there's a lot on everyone's mind. Everybody, there's a lot that's consuming our thinking. We've got a lot that people are worried about. I, it's really important that we encourage each other and we realize that we're in this together and that we help each other get to the best decisions for our kids. And getting back to that will never go wrong when we keep kids at the middle and, and at the center and they're our driving force for our decisions. So, um, as a district staff and I know as our whole governance team, you know, we put our hearts. And souls into this every day, into this work. And it's because we love our kids. We love every one of our schools and we love this community. So thank you to all of you who are being a part of this very important work that we've got going on. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item five point five, which is, uh, public input concerning items on the agenda. This is a call for, uh, speaker requests. So we're gonna be closing. The, um, the online request form for speaking. Uh, but if you submitted a request, then please be sure that you have raised your hand. In the participant list, or if you're calling in, dial star nine to raise your hand, so that we can pass you into the call. And please make sure that you don't click raise hand unless you plan to address the board and you've completed the request form. Again, if you are unable for some reason to use the link, please email Megan Bennett. That's two N's, two T's at m Bennett at D M U S D dot org. Item five point six is board approval of governing board of trustees' meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Member Rafter?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Number Wooden?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the minutes has passed. Um, item six point one to six point two five is the consent agenda. We have speakers. So I'll call first Travis Jennings, followed by Rosanna Alvarado Martin. Go ahead, Travis.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Um, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak here, um, this evening. I do appreciate that. Um, I, I wanted to speak, uh, if, if this is, I thought it was for, um, uh, section six point two. Is that, am I okay to speak here now?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, it's my first time. So, just to introduce myself, I, um, I'm speaking, oh, my name is Travis Jennings, um, and I'm a parent of a daughter at Sycamore Ridge. Um, I wanted to speak on behalf of the position of Ms. Crystal Clover. That's, that's the issue I'm here to talk about tonight. My, um, my background is I'm a, I'm a, uh, scientist. I'm a senior manager. Actually for a local biotech and I run a team of about ten scientists, depending on the month, sometimes it changes, right? Um. That'll be relevant in a second. Um, but, uh, as a scientist, I've, um, I, I wanted to talk about. My interactions, my ability to work with Ms. Clover, who is the science teacher for the STEAM Plus. And it's my understanding that her position is, um, being threatened right now. And. That's a, that's a major concern to me, especially as a scientist and especially as a parent. I, uh, my relationship, um, and the reason I know Ms. Clover is I've actually had the opportunity to work in her classroom. Uh, a couple of times over the past couple of years and as a guest scientist or as a celebrity scientist. Um, I think she calls it, um, where I teach the kids about, uh, temperature, uh, temperature changes and phases of matter. Which is also known as, uh, making ice cream, super popular. So Ms. Clover has an awesome relationship with her students. She has this passion for science that you can just see in her eyes and the students. Um, when I'm there, I see the relationship that they have with her. This is something that, um, I think is, is super important and is not. Present in all students or in all, and sorry, in that relationship between all students and all teachers. And so it's really special. But I have to admit that this, this, um, this is bigger than just Ms. Clover. This, this is about the team and what happened is. I realized her, her team, um, other, other teachers got ahold of us and let us know that this is being threatened. And that means. That I think they're, they feel that their positions, you know, when you, when you're, uh, threaten a member of the team, you're threatening everybody, I feel. And, and that means that's something that, that is very valuable, I think, that, that feeling of teamwork. And I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. I realize I have twenty-eight seconds. Because, uh, we talk about people being the most valuable asset in my company and, um, I'm, as a manager of people myself, I'm familiar with the difficult decisions and no doubt. You guys, everybody has very difficult decisions to make these days. Uh, but something like this is shaking those foundations. Ten seconds, I hear you. So when we have to make these decisions, come back to your core values. Uh, are you supporting the team, the school vision and those core values? Thanks.
Thank you. Rosanna Alvarado Martin.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for an opportunity to speak. I was a little bit confused because. I had emailed, uh, board members that I had a number of questions about. Um, several items. In the consent section, six point one through six point two five. But the speaker slip only allowed me to click one spot for all these items. So three minutes is not gonna do justice. So I, I will talk about the highlights and that is that I'm concerned about the board having. Six point seven, six point eight and six point nine talking about transferring funds. But not mentioning any dollar amounts. And so if the board members approve these, then I feel like it's just a blank check. We are not given, um, much information on this and it's very concerning. I'll back up to item six point six, which is, um, the education protection account. And, um, if you open that document, it said that the information's on the website, but it's not on the website. So I looked and it's not there. So I have concerns about that. On item six point one seven, I have concerns about the Torrey Hills, uh, field. The expense going from five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I'm curious if that'll be brought up. I'm curious if it'll be brought up, the, um. The large expense to placeworks. That's on the purchase order. For hazardous waste removal. For hazardous waste removal, sixty four thousand nine hundred and six dollars. I'm hoping that someone's going to address what that is and if that's at Delmar Heights School. And I live very close to that school, I'd like to know what the hazardous waste removal is. Um, I'm also concerned about our audit that's listed for seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. When I looked on the Slaughna Beach website and their audit's three thousand dollars. So I have a number of concerns on this entire meeting's agenda that. I feel were not transparent, not enough information was provided to the public to review. There are several positions, several. Positions where people are being laid off. And then in place of that, there are several positions that are being moved to different pay groups, but. None of the pay groups are listed on the website, so you can't tell if it's an increase. There are some positions that are getting mileage stipends for eighteen hundred dollars a year. When we're going into a year with tight budgets and with the pandemic, we're not traveling for training. Or conferences, people are working from home, so I find it interesting that we're giving eighteen hundred dollar annual mileage stipends. And also increased life insurance. So I'm just a little bit confused. I I know I'm being cut off. I only had, you know, twenty five items to talk about in three minutes, so thank you. Have a nice evening.
Okay, uh, Mike Morales, followed by Hera Cohen. Mike, you're in the call.
Morales. Oh no, my name's Mike Morales. I'm here with my family to talk about uh. The science teacher at Sycamore Ridge, Crystal Clover. And my kids have attended Sycamore Ridge. Uh, my wife and I are actually friends with Ms. Clover and we want to make sure. Uh, we represent to the board, uh, our concerns about the potential lack of a science teacher at Sycamore Ridge. As well as potentially getting rid of Ms. Clover.
So we, like my husband said, we've been a family of Sycamore Ridge since twenty twelve and we are here on behalf of keeping a full-time science program. And more importantly, Ms. Clover as part of the Sycamore Ridge family. Admittedly, we are not a science family. We're unlike Mr. Jennings and his science background. My husband and I are lawyers. We are. Not science people, but Ms. Clover and the program at Sycamore Ridge has turned our kids into science kids. Something that wouldn't have normally happened but for the program and Ms. Clover at Sycamore Ridge. We think that it's really important in a, a community where biotech and science is so important that we really teach our children. The possibilities of having a career in this area. There are so many professions available in the science industry. Uh, that we really shouldn't be cutting them off at such a young age from this important area um, for careers for themselves in the future. Earlier we heard from Phoebe Catzel and it was so nice to hear that uh, the foundation has been able to raise one point two million. And that we have a giant check, I love seeing the giant check, for one point one million dollars. What we heard is. That there is, that everyone is thrilled about the incredible generosity. And that we would like to see a strong and robust program next year. That it's impressive during these times and that we're bringing the community together and keeping momentum in all schools in STEAM plus. For next year. I saw the board clap and we equally applauded because we think this is really important. And this is something that should continue at our school and continue with Ms. Clover. An important part of why we decided to move to Carmel Valley and put our kids in the Delmar Unified School District. Is the opportunity to give them the education that most people have to pay for in private school. And I very much worry that by potentially eliminating a full-time position and eliminating teachers like Ms. Clover. We are uh, potentially going to drive away parents and families that are looking for that. Full, well-rounded education for their children. We are thrilled with the education that our kids have received. But most of that is because we have had the teachers, principals, teachers, programs that we've seen. At Sycamore Ridge. So we very much would like to support. The continuation of a full-time science program at Sycamore Ridge. And again, more importantly, keeping Ms. Clover, who is an absolutely inspiring teacher. She gives more than I think any of us really think that we could give. Um, being a teacher to our children and we, we are so blessed to have had her for the time that we have had and we. Absolutely put forth our biggest support for keeping her for next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take Kat Gilbert, followed by Repali Gupta.
I believe we have uh, Hera Cohen in as well.
It, um, okay. So Ha- Hera Cohen? And you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, so my name is Hera Cohen. I am also a parent at Sycamore Ridge, just like Odette and Mike. Morales and Travis also mentioned Travis Jennings. Um, I agree completely with what the other two families have said. Uh, my input though is a little bit more personal. Uh, I have been in the science fair program with Crystal for two years. Um, my, both of my children have had her as a science teacher. And she has been absolutely amazing in developing the science fair program, in recruiting the teachers. In helping the parents, help the children. And um, very, to my dismay and many other parents, this was canceled this year. But we did have a very um, brief period of time when Crystal. Was extremely involved in all the programs, uh, making sure that the kids were excited. And the one thing that I have noticed. Um, with Crystal and the science program at Sycamore Ridge is that. She has a knack for getting children so interested and so excited and so motivated to learn about science. And as a parent who has no background in science. Um, that is extremely important to us because of the things that Odette and Mike said about the. Opportunities in this region. Um, I think it's really important for us to keep the continuity with the teacher. Especially because of everything that we've gone through over the past three or four months. To go back to school without having Ms. Clover and without having that continuity, I think would be detrimental to our children.
Thank you. So next we'll have Kat Gilbert, followed by Repali Gupta.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes, I can see you.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Kat Gilbert and I am the art specialist at Sycamore Ridge. And in the final days of the school year, I learned that my teammate, colleague and friend, Crystal Clover, would not be offered a contract for next year. Crystal has been the science specialist at Sycamore for the past two years. And after a revolving door of music and science um, teachers at our site in the previous seven years. It's been an absolute joy to collaborate with Crystal and the other members of our team to provide exceptional learning opportunities to students. If you have not had the pleasure of seeing Crystal in action, her knowledge and passion for science. Her genuine love and interest in the students and her flexibility and positivity. Allowed her begin making an impact at Sycamore Ridge on day one. Both with our almost six hundred students and also as a collaborator with my team, with the general ed teachers and the support staff. I could go on and on about Crystal's contributions over the past two years, but what I would like you to consider tonight. Is something that we already know, which became abundantly clear when we made the abrupt transition to distance learning this year. Relationships matter. Human connection matters. I had hundreds of interactions with students during distance learning and they always ended with, I miss you. I miss my teachers, I miss my friends. No mention of their amazing art studio or modern classrooms or any program. And while those are important, yes, relationships are essential. A STEAM plus team is more than a group of specialists delivering content. STEAM plus specialists are invested in our students, in our school, in our team. Like every site-based specialist, Crystal has a relationship with each of our students. Failing to renew her contract, coupled with retirees and reassignments causes a domino effect. That will create itinerant specialists moving to multiple sites. This is neither best for our children nor for teachers. Nor for health and safety as we try to minimize our circles of contact during COVID nineteen. The events of the spring were traumatic and when students return to school in the fall, they will need comfort, security. Reassurance and familiarity. Without this, learning will not occur. And when our Sycamore students return, they will find one point five members of their STEAM team intact. That's a tremendous loss. For what purpose? In our current existence where students have lost much of what they have come to count on as normal. Our site-based STEAM plus teams will be more vital than ever. We are a constant. We work with students throughout their elementary experience. Consider the impact that a constant trusted adult can make in the life of a child over seven years. It's powerful. I urge you to consider what is best for students. Our reserves are reserved for rainy days. If COVID nineteen does not qualify, what does? A small investment into our reserves to ensure that we do not lose an impactful educator like Crystal Clover is beyond worthwhile. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And then Repali Gupta, your last speaker on the consent.
Hi, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm actually also a parent at Sycamore Ridge who wanted to speak on behalf of Crystal Clover. Um, I have two kids at Sycamore Ridge and I met Crystal because I participated in the Science Field Day. Um, I am. I've done a lot of science myself on the physician at UCSD and absolutely thought that Crystal. Brought a passion and enthusiasm to science and to the love of science with the kids. Um, and I just thought she was an invaluable part of her education and really enjoyed working with her. Um, I will say that I was considering not doing Science Field Day again this year, only because the time commitment and, you know, multitasking um, in life. But it was literally because of Crystal and because I enjoyed working with her so much and the way she ran the Science Field Day and ran the program. And worked with the kids and her enthusiasm that um, I had signed up again, you know, would like to continue to commit to that, so. I don't have to, I don't actually have a big pre-prepared speech, I just wanted to advocate for her and say she's amazing and. It would really be a terrible, terrible loss um, to not have her at Sycamore. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, that is all our speakers on the consent agenda, but now we have time um, for any questions from the board. I have a couple, but let's see if anybody else has any to start. Okay, oh, Fitz, do you want to go ahead?
Uh, it's fine, you can, you can go if you have something. I was just gonna, I I just didn't want to make a habit of going through all these kind of things, but uh. You know, I I know Chris can kind of briefly speak to um, kind of how how bids work maybe, that might kind of help a little bit. Um, and and uh, you know, kind of go through that. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, yes, of course you are. I um, would imagine you're talking about the Torrey Hills field. Uh, there are two pieces that came in with that. One is, uh, we did include a uh. Gopher mesh underlayment. Torrey Hills field has had a few years of. Uh, of issues with gophers that really actually come to a point where they're causing some student safety concerns and so. We went through a process, um, working with architects and looking into some research into how could we prevent gophers? So we're not just redoing a field and then having the same issues with holes and uh, concerns for kids. And so that. Uh, did, did lead into some increased costs. And the other piece is bids and we only received two bids for this project. Uh, one was for the approximately eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, another was over a million dollars. Uh, this, with the student safety aspect, uh, was an important project to move forward with. And uh, we believe that with this, um, with the research we've done, this underlayment and uh, there's sort of a layer of. Um, gravel piece and then there's the uh. The dirt and the turf that goes on top of it, the, the regular turf that goes on top of it and that. Prevents the gophers from either tumbling underneath or being able to do the tumbling on top. And so um, we, we wanted to take that step so that we can ensure that our kids have a safe place to play. Uh, for a longer period of time and not end up with the same issues we'd had before.
If it's like a significant uh, difference being like the cost of what you estimated to be and something that you. And what the bids are coming in, do you, do you um, reevaluate that or do you kind of um, potentially go back out for more bids or how does that work?
tend to go back cover more bid. We reevaluated and part of it is, um, we, we didn't uh. Have enough of a cost associated with some of those pieces. So it's a combination of reevaluating and do you go back out for another bid, as well as looking at the environment and does that mean we need to reevaluate what we are budgeting? For future fields, because we have some fields coming up in the future and reassessing whether that's the correct budget number for the, for upcoming field projects.
Thank you.
Okay, and then there was that, there are a couple of other questions that were raised, just to go through some of them. Um, and we may want to grab Kathy Burks for just a clarification on the transferring funds, um, question and what those uh, are about. Um, so perhaps Chris, while you get her, um. Holly, would you mind addressing items um, six point two through six point two two that. Various staff positions that um, are either being modified or added? Could you clarify all those?
Sure, so six point two zero is the new job description for the program assistant in instructional services. That is done to reflect the um, current work that's required as we fill that position. We have a retirement happening. Um, and it's for mostly, most of that refers to managing testing, uh, CalPads reporting. And CAS test data managing is what that, primarily the change is there. Six point two one is the new job description for speech language pathology assistant. And uh, that really is to provide, it's new job description, provides speech-related services to students. Um, works along, um, alongside our speech language um, teachers. And um, actually allows then our speech language teachers to do assessment, attend IEP meetings. And still our children actually get services that they need. So it's a wonderful compliment to provide. Great service to our children. And then the last one that you referred to was six point two two, I think, right? Okay, revised e- early childhood development center job descriptions. That is specific to um, reflect the addition of requiring six units. Of administration for it, for those employees to have, so that we can maintain licensing. Because in our ECDC, we actually have licensing requirements. So that actually. Um, then addresses those six units that are, that would be required. And then the staff would have one year to complete that and um, we are paying for those classes and. Um, I think the payment, if I recall, is less than or around two hundred dollars an employee. So it's really related to licensing and what those staff members have. And I think I have addressed all of the things related to that position.
Okay, thank you. And before we get to Kathy, while I have you, could you address the topic that many of the um, speakers have raised? Regarding, are we going to continue to have science at Sycamore Ridge or whatever else you can tell us about that position?
Right, we will have science at Sycamore Ridge, so um, we're looking at our STEAM plus for the entire. District and we will have science at Sycamore Ridge. So I don't know if there's anything more um, that I can share at this time. Other than that, we do have a presentation coming up later in the board specific to STEAM plus that we could also address it at that time.
Okay, and are you able to comment on specific personnel issues in open session?
I can't. If it's personnel, yes, I can.
So you couldn't tell us about a particular person, for example?
Correct, right, right. We can talk about, you know, content area and subject areas and. And all of that and not, not, not specific to a particular employee.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Kathy, would you mind explaining um, the transfer of funds? Let's see, it's item. Uh, I think it's six point eight and there may be, and maybe six point seven. Can you explain what those are and how that works?
So in regards to six point seven, which is the authorizing temporary inter-fund transfers. It's in regards to, because we're a basic A district and our revenues mostly come from property taxes. We find that October and November, our cash flow begins to deplete. And so this provides us the opportunity to borrow from another fund for a very short period of time. Until we hit December tenth and our property taxes fund there and then we immediately pay back those funds. We don't know what that amount would be at the time, so typically we don't put that amount down as to what we anticipate, you know, needing. But um, we, we always do our analysis of our cash flows and so. This just gives us an opportunity, some flexibility, rather than going out and looking at an institution and paying. You know, higher range, interest rate or paying additional fees to be able to borrow. So uh, this helps the district uh, to, during that time period.
And if I'm not mistaken, we've done this every year.
Absolutely, every year we do this. Absolutely, every year we do this.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, this is a common, it's cash flow. It's moving between savings and checking, and it's mainly so you can pay your checks and bills. And then you can move it back when you get the money in. And like I said, it's a standard item that we do every year. And the same, I think the same person had a question in the email that I had gotten about the signatures. And again, that maybe you can address that piece. I'm not sure what 6.89.
Okay.
That same thing is who can write checks and it's a standard item, but you can address that one.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and go down to 6.8, which is the, or actually 6.9 is, okay, the authorizing agents to sign commercial warrants. We did not include our Director of Finance last month. And so we're bringing this back to include him. And what it does is that when we are, receive commercial warrants from the county, it allows us to have, you know, the ability to have more than a couple people to sign those commercial warrants. And it's just signing the checks to be able to pay our vendors. And we keep that on file at the county office because they are, are audit to, to check those signatures, and it's just signing checks.
And, and another question has to do with the audits and the, the difference in the amounts. I think somebody mentioned that Solana Beach was substantially less expensive than ours. Is there a reason for that? Or is it an apples and apples comparison?
I don't know what that particular item would have been for Solana Beach. I believe 3,000 is extremely low. So I'm not quite sure what the, the, the expenditure for our audit is for the year, for 17,400. And the district had gone out for a request for proposal and interviewed several audit firms and had decided to bring to the board the approval for using our Wilkinson and Hadley for our financial audit. And I believe that they were on the low end in regards to this. So it's, it's a requirement that we have, that we have an independent auditor that comes and reviews not only the general fund or other funds, and also will be looking at our Fund 22, which is our GeoBond fund. And I want to say that with purchase orders, this is for the year. This is, you know, we, we, we are, are putting in a purchase order to, to designate how much we'll be spending for the year.
I just want to ask, I mean, is this, no, I really, like I said, I don't want to make a habit of this. Is this like the best use of time, like when, because I don't want to go through every single item when someone in the public is going to be raising an issue about it when they don't have the full picture. I, I, I understand the need for transparency, but we could literally be here like all night going through this item by item, saying which purchase order was, was valid, which purchase order cost how much money? Because like Kathy said, like some of these items are like, you know, it may be over a course of a year. Like our, you can't compare the exact number from like ours to Solana Beach. I mean, it's, it's, it's just, this, these comparisons could go on forever. So I don't know if we want to keep spending our time doing this.
You know, I am more than happy to, if there's a question on a board item, if someone wants to reach out to me with a question, I'm more than happy to, to answer those. Basically, when we take something to consent, it's something that might be standard that we've seen before. Our board memos that we include are, give explanation as to what we're bringing for approval. And also, I try to make sure when it has, depends on the item, because we're talking about the EPA and about the funds that we are signing by resolution. I think that's 6.6. So if you were to go to our website, look under Departments, Business Services, you're going to see Financial and Budget forms. And for many, many years, everything's there, our audits, our budgets, our presentations, the EPA, all our presentations. So it, it's there on the website, and I'm more than happy to, to help someone navigate that if they so need that assistance.
Thanks for that, the ability to talk to anybody who wants to know more. Because like I said, a lot of these, they're standard items that come through every year. And if people haven't been looking at it every year, and they have questions on it, if you're able to explain it, that's perfect. I think the only other, the other question was about the hazardous waste. And I know in California, everything is pretty much a hazardous waste. But maybe you can address that and what it was and, and what was removed or so.
That also was a bid item, and I don't know, Chris, do you want to talk about that?
Which, which item was it, Kathy? I was trying to pull up the.
That was, I believe, 6.3. I think it was going through the purchase orders. It was an item in the purchase orders. It was the place where it's 64,000 for hazardous waste removal. And I think the question was what it was because they were concerned that there's hazardous waste at Delmar High School. And like I said, pretty much in California, everything is.
We haven't, well, we haven't actually removed hazardous waste from Delmar, Delmar High School at this point. There is the, during demo, there would be an abatement and removal. But there was, I, I think that's labeling for the additional environmental study that was done to support the response to comments. Because Placeworks did do the response to comments. There was additional cost to do the full response to comment because it was a larger document. So that number is, is about the number that we added to the original cost that Placeworks, that we, we went through for the initial study and the initial mitigated negative declaration.
You know, and I just got to add to that too, and it was under the purchase order list. And that, the more deep, more in-depth detail in regards to that was in the board packet on June 26th, which has a memo about us and why we went through the bid process and how we selected Placeworks. And then since the board had approved it in June, then now we do the purchase order. And the purchase order is showing up, and now it shows on the PO list. So there's a timing to that also. But definitely, we could help, you know, a community member navigate to the correct board packet to, to find the additional information that has been presented to the board for approval.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And thank you for your offer to help anybody go through these documents. It's a lot of detail, and it does take a little looking at it a few times to understand how everything works. So we appreciate that offer. Are there any other questions before I call for a motion? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.25?
I'll move to approve the consent items.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Woodin?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion to approve the consent agenda has passed. We are at item 7.1, Board Report, Student and Staff, Student and Staff Health and School Preparation. We do have a comment on this and some of the upcoming items, so just a reminder on process. We'll take the board report, followed by questions from board members. Then we'll take public comment and any additional discussion after that. So I will turn it over to Jenny Ha, Director of Student Services. But you're muted. Sorry about that. Good evening, President Halpern, members of the board, and Dr. McClurg. I am here tonight to talk to you about student and staff health and safety and how it relates to our preparation for the next school year. Next slide. Uh oh. Looks like we have three practical duties. Just bear with us for a second.
One moment, let me. Good to go.
Okay, thank you, Chris. As Holly mentioned earlier, the health and safety of our students and staff is always our first and highest priority. So as we prepare for next year, during a global pandemic, we are doing so through the lens of health and safety first and foremost. Next slide, Chris. Since school closures were mandated in March, the information related to COVID-19 continued to change and evolve. We are staying informed and continue to communicate and collaborate with our local and state health agencies. And ultimately, the decision to open or close schools or even to restrict how we open schools is directed by these local and state public health officials. Next slide. When we received the order in March that schools would be temporarily closed, our first concern was how do we reduce the impact of school closures on our students? These impacts were really experienced by students across the globe as a result of school closures. There were concerns for students being able to equally access remote learning and a concern for reaching our vulnerable students, our students with disabilities, foster youth, and students who may be experiencing homelessness. And as, as well as the obvious impact, which is a loss of learning and even the possibility of regression of skills. The fiscal impact has been felt nationally, as well as in our community, families, staff members, and even in our school district. So the social emotional impact affects students and staff due to isolation, loss of social interaction with peers, trauma, fear associated with the pandemic, and as well as an impact to mental health due to just being isolated and away from a normal routine. And finally, screen time, and also the excessive use of screen time can have a social emotional impact on children. There is an impact to the health of our students, even though the closure was really related to health. It does have, there can be a negative impact for students who rely on schools for daily nutrition, physical activity and education, as well as a concern that families may skip regular health visits and immunizations. Next slide. So in response to these potential impacts, the district responded promptly. We increased our communication to the community, families and staff via our website, emails, and weekly videos. We rolled out Chromebooks to all students and also to our instructional support staff to ensure equal access to remote learning. We met with our teachers and special education teams to ensure that all students were able to access curriculum as we rolled out our emergency remote learning platforms. We also distributed meals to families through our nutrition program. And we served approximately 1,800 meals to families between March 16th and June 13th. Next slide, please. So as the governor began to talk publicly about schools being closed for the remainder of the school year, we began to proactively plan for next school year. We formed a back-to-school committee to inform the planning and preparation process. The committee was made up of staff members from each department within our district and included our school nurses, staff from our HR department, IT, maintenance and operations of facilities, childcare, business services, and of course, instructional services and special education. Next slide. We had our first meeting in the end of April and started conversations and thinking around what we knew to be true first and then what we expected based on a few general assumptions. Our facilities and operations team focused on cleaning and disinfecting schedules and looking at our facilities to allow for distancing. We had a team discussing our learning opportunities and different options for learning models. And we asked parents for input, for their interests for next year. We had a team looking at logistics and scheduling. Again, we started with what we knew to be true and created our end-of-the-year procedures for collecting Chromebooks, packing rooms, and distributing students' belongings. We looked at possible contingency plans for different options. This work, of course, is continuing as much of the scheduling and logistics will be based on enrollment, our number of students on campus, and even any updates to our public health order. So we looked at childcare, our, our Early Childhood Development Center, as well as our K-6 programs. And like I mentioned, we will be continuing this work prior to the return to school. And we'll be collaborating with our district administrators and also our leadership team before we return in August. Next slide. So based on what we, we knew to be true at that time and the work of our committee, we began to order supplies for the district. We immediately ordered personal protective equipment, face coverings, and face shields and gloves for staff. We ordered and have received and distributed to each campus no-touch thermometers. We also have ordered hospital-grade thermometers that will be provided to our school, school nurses. We have ordered and distributed hand sanitizer. We have installed hand sanitizer dispensers throughout the district. And we're in the process of acquiring hand washing stations that we will also be adding as needed to sites that need additional opportunities for hand washing for students. We have received Plexiglas barriers that we will be utilizing in our offices, in our main offices of our campuses, to provide protection for our office staff. And our school nurses have worked to create protocols for our health offices and how to address illnesses on campus. Next slide. In early June, we asked parents to confirm their enrollment for either an in-person learning opportunity or distance learning. We needed to be able to have a preliminary number so that we could begin thinking about staffing needs and developing these programs. We, we do recognize the challenge that parents face in making a decision without knowing definitively what the program will look like in the fall. So we are providing parents one more opportunity to make a final choice the first week of August. We do anticipate that these numbers of students enrolling in district, distance learning and in-person learning will change after we offer the amendment period in August. Next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, the mandate to close schools or enforce health restrictions comes from the San Diego County Public Health Order. The current public health order allows for schools to reopen provided that they can comply with the measures listed in the publication from the California Department of Public Health. We do anticipate that there will be updates to the health order and to the guidelines prior to schools reopening. Next slide. The California Department of Public Health COVID-19 Guidelines for Schools. It is considered to be an interim guideline. We are told it will be updated as necessary depending on data. Like I said, everything continues to change. There are new updates to mandates and new mandates coming out frequently. And as those change, the guidelines will change. And we will also respond to any changes in the guidelines. We will update and adjust our plans to reflect any changes in the guidelines. And there are 10 guidelines, but the Department of Public Health has emphasized that the first four are the four that they refer to as the Big Four. And we're going to look at all of those in this presentation. Next slide. Okay, so the California Department of Public Health Industry Guidelines for Reopening Schools. The first guideline is termed General Measures and includes continued communication with local and state health officials, collaborating with other local educational agencies, and developing a plan for possible repeated closures due to COVID-19. Next slide. Promoting healthy hygiene and practices. I don't think we're going to be able to stress this one too much. We will be incorporating hand washing into all of our regular practices and instructing students and staff on proper hand washing techniques. We've already installed, like I said, hand sanitizer dispensers throughout the district, and will provide hand washing stations, stations as needed. Also in guideline two, it does address the issue of face coverings. Staff will be required to wear face coverings. Like I mentioned, we will have clear face shields available for instructional staff. This guideline was, was released prior to the governor's new state mandate requiring masks for anyone in a public space over the age of three. So there is still some confusion right now about this recent update from the state regarding face masks. But what the information that we have right now in the current guideline is that students are encouraged to wear face masks. But at this time, the guideline does not indicate a requirement for face masks. Of course, like I said, we will be encouraging students to wear face masks and wear the. Of course, like I said, we will be encouraging students to wear face masks and wear them properly. And, um, we have reached out to the state and our county health department has reached out to the state. To get clarification on this issue of face masks. And if the requirement does apply for students in school, of course, we will be complying with that guideline as well and requiring masks for students. But as of right now, this is the guideline, um, as it's currently written. Okay, guideline three, intensify cleaning, disinfection and ventilation. Our maintenance operations and facility staff has already created a sanitation protocol. That is currently in place for our sites that are housing our childcare and our camp programs. This includes disinfecting high-touch surfaces frequently throughout the day. And also a cleaning schedule to clean and disinfect any shared equipment or shared, um, supplies. Although we're really going to try to limit the use of shared supplies. Okay, the fourth guideline in the big four involves this, the issue of distancing. We need to look at allowing for distancing inside and outside of the classroom. Arrival and departure time, how do we minimize contact between students and staff or families at the beginning and end of the day? We need to be looking at using as many entry routes as possible and possibly ever even staggering our start and end times. Next slide. Within the classroom, we're looking at maximizing the space between students. Ensuring teacher desks are six feet away from student desks and minimizing movement of students. So, um, allowing our students to remain in a group with a single teacher throughout the day. And really reducing the amount of co-mingling as much as possible. And finally, instructing students on the importance of distancing. And also how to maintain distance from other students in a way that is developmentally, developmentally appropriate for all students to understand. Next slide. Okay, so also looking at distancing outside of the classroom. We will limit the number of people on campus to students and essential staff and visitors only. We're considering looking at all of our spaces, inside spaces, outside spaces and. Including the regular use of outdoor space for instruction. And again, students should remain in the same space and in groups as small and consistent as practicable. We are, will limit communal activities, so we won't be having students congregate for activities or mixing with other groups of students. In areas that don't allow for physical distancing. Next slide. Okay, so to summarize, we will be implementing the guideline to allow for distancing by maximizing the use of our spaces. Indoors and outdoor spaces. Our campuses will be closed to the public. Only students and essential staff will be allowed on campus. Again, this is to minimize the risk of transmission. Students will stay in cohorts. And as a district, we've always had the benefit of low class sizes. So like Holly mentioned before, um, as we look at enrollment, some of our students will be engaging in distance learning. So some of our enrollment numbers will automatically be impacted. Um, so we have the benefit of a lower class size. And like I said, we will look at staggering start and end times and possibly staggering recess and lunch. Next slide. Okay, we like, as I mentioned, limiting sharing of supplies and also providing training to our staff. And providing educational materials to families in, in the areas of safety and health precautions. We will include information for parents regarding these precautions in our back to school packets and also on our district website. Next, Chris, thanks. All right, we will check for signs and symptoms of illness. We will implement screening procedures for all staff and students in, entering the building. As I mentioned, we have already received our no-touch thermometers and we have implemented this screening procedure. For our staff already at our, uh, schools that have had employees returning. We will conduct visual wellness checks for our students. And we will also be implementing, um, ways to identify possible exposures. And report them to staff and families. Next slide. Okay, s- number eight, planned for when a staff member or a student becomes sick. We need to identify an isolation room to separate anyone who exhibits symptoms. Most of this, uh, for number eight is included in that health office protocol that I mentioned previously that our school nurses have been working on. We will notify local health officials, staff and families of any positive cases of COVID nineteen. Close off any areas used by any sick person. And, and not use that room until it has been thoroughly cleaned and disinfected. We will advise six staff members and students not to return until they've met the CDC criteria to discontinue home isolation. And finally, uh, as we're looking and considering staff members possibly being out due to illness. We, we need to look at our substitutes. And because we are the trainers of the consortium, DMUSD will be training our substitutes. In using our remote learning platforms. Next slide. Okay, maintaining healthy operations. Support staff and students who are at risk by providing an option for distance learning and telework. We will also provide communication with staff and families regarding possible exposures while ensuring. And maintaining confidentiality, confidentiality as is required by law. Next slide. And ten, consideration for total or partial closures. When a student or staff member tests positive for COVID nineteen and has exposed others, we will take these steps. We will, in consultation with the local public health department, determine if school closures are warranted. In some cases, there may be a case of, um, the need for a school closure or the, or a classroom closure. And we will respond to those by collaborating with our public health officials. And we will implement a communication plan to make sure that our students, parents, teachers, staff and community. Are aware of our school closures and the reasons for, for needing to close those schools. Okay, next slide. So the San Diego County Public Health Order also states that each district will complete and post a document called a safe reopening plan. That details the actions taken by the district to comply with the state public health industry guidelines for schools. This document has not yet been released by our county department of health. So we are awaiting that, the release of that document. So that we can move forward with our safe reopening plan and have that in place for review and posting before school starts in August. Next slide. So while the state guidelines promote reducing the risk of transmission of the coronavirus. We also need to focus on the mental health of our students and staff. We do anticipate that there will be and has been and will continue to be an impact on the emotional well-being of our students and staff. The Student Services Department has begun to develop a program for next year. That will be led by our school psychologists who have expertise in this area. We are currently flying positions for psychology student interns. To provide universal supports to our schools under the supervision of our school psychologists. We have conducted trauma-informed trainings to certificated staff earlier in, in this year. But we would like to expand that training to other staff members for next year. And also we will be looking at providing these social emotional supports to all students regardless of in which program they have enrolled. Finally, promoting mental health and wellness for our, our staff. We do have employee assistance programs that are available to staff through our insurance providers and also the county. Next slide. So we know that parents want to know what will next year look like specifically. Um, as we go through these guidelines, we know what the expectation will be based on the information that we have right now. But there are still many uncertainties. So what we do know, based on what we do know, schools will be closed to the public. And we will have students and essential staff only on campus. Adults will be in masks. Again, students will be encouraged to wear masks and that's based on the information that we have today. Students will be in cohorts. We will be staggering start and end times. And looking at small class sizes to allow for physical distancing. But again, class sizes will depend on final enrollment. So again, there are still uncertainties, but regardless, we're absolutely committed to providing a safe and healthy environment for our students and staff. And we'll do so under the guidance of our state and local health departments. So as I mentioned, our enrollment and the number of students opting into distant, distance learning. Really has an input on our planning and our, uh, class sizes and staffing. So at this point, I would like to ask Jason Romero to speak to the issue of enrollment. You could go to the next slide, Chris.
Great, thank you. Board President Erica Halpern, board members and, uh, superintendent Dr. McClurg. Um, one of the things that the district has been experiencing over the past four years is a decline in enrollment. And the district has averaged between six hundred and fifty to seven hundred students per grade level. So with seven grade levels, you know, just the rough math in, in, in doing six hundred and fifty times seven. You're looking at an enrollment of, you know, the, in the middle of four thousands. So last year we did have, or this current year, nineteen twenty school year, um, just over four thousand students. And we will be losing a cohort of six hundred and sixty-eight sixth graders. And rolling up a cohort of about five hundred kindergarten students. So you can see the two slides, uh, two numbers sets back, uh, along each, each side. Um, this school year, you can look at, we, what we do is we roll up the numbers. So kindergarten, uh, this year will be the first grade students, uh, next year. Um, and we consistently have had over the past three years. Uh, kindergarten class sizes in the mid, uh, to low five hundreds. So we're experiencing a decline in enrollment across the district. And what that presents for us next year is an ability to have more space for students. So we do know that, you know, roughly as, uh, Ms. Ha has talked about tonight. About ten percent of our families have initially, uh, requested an interest in, in distance learning. Um, and if we take our current numbers, that would be about, you know, near four hundred students. So next year, our enrollment, uh, should be around three thousand eight hundred to three thousand nine hundred students. And then another, let's just say, four of the students opting for distance learning. Which would bring our at-school site enrollment closer to the thirty-five hundred mark. So it does present us opportunities to have, uh, you know, practice more social distancing in classrooms with lower class size. The district is committed, uh, to, uh, ensuring that our staff, both distance learning. And at our school site is sufficient for any, uh, any contingencies that may have to be in place. Uh, to allow for adjustments for parents to make in August. Thank you.
Okay, next slide, thank you. So like, like Jason said, we take the responsibility of providing a safe learning environment for our students and staff very seriously. And we're deeply committed to ensuring that our schools are responsive to the needs of our community and also are student-centered. So I would like to ask Shelley Peterson to join me to review the different learning models that we have considered. For next years, for next school year. Next slide.
All right. Good evening, President Halpern, board members and Dr. McClurg. Um, so there are, uh, predominantly three different, um, s- return to school models which have been discussed. The first is the in-person and full return to school. And then the second being a hybrid or blended model and the third being distance learning. So Jenny really talked about what we anticipate some of the elements of the in-person. Full return to school will look like. And there was actually a meeting today held at, um, through the San Diego County Office of Education. And one of the conversations or the, the topics were around the LCAP replacement report. And that report, um, is going to focus on learning continuity and attendance for the twenty-twenty-one school year. And in that discussion from the state, it is said that students are expected to be in school to the greatest extent. Possible. And then they do not anticipate there being any waivers for the required number of school days. The hundred and eighty day requirement. And so with that in mind, we've, um, we, we are making plans for that in-person, that full return to school. When we initially looked at the hybrid or the blended learning model. Um, in looking at that, it really means less school for students. Unless we are forced to, it did not make sense to us to create schedules where students got. School, got to come to school and receive instruction fifty percent of the time. One of the issues around that is that it's the, the obvious that it's less school for students, less learning from their teacher. And if students aren't in school, well then, where are they? Are they in childcare? Um, are they home alone? Are they home, uh, being babysat by an older sibling? That created, uh, a number of concerns and really is in alignment with this, with what the state is asking us to do. Additionally, a blended model, um, would require additional teachers. As we're already splitting up into two models with that in-person instruction and a distance learning model. Um, that, that is, uh, creating a situation where we have to hire additional teachers. Because as Jason is, is famous for saying, our children don't parse out in nice neat little packages. So when we provide options for parents, different percentages and numbers of, of students go into these different programs. And it does require us to extend our staffing. And so those are the two models that, um, that I'm going to pause with right here. Our next agenda item is a lengthy conversation about distance learning. So I want to pause here and I think, Chris, you can go to next slide. So that the board has an opportunity to ask any questions of Jenny.
Okay, thank you. You've given us a, a lot to ask about, um, and thank you for the detailed presentation. So let's take, um, questions from board members. We do have a public comment, but let's first get the board members' questions.
Thanks, I need to leave for the healthcare.
Um, go ahead, Juat, and then we'll take Scott next.
Okay, yeah, than- thanks Jenny, um, appreciate the, the detailed, uh, presentation. Um, I, I kinda, unfortunately, my, my sound kinda calmed out a little bit in there and I had to kinda log off. Is there a way that this presentation is gonna be put online, um, that maybe we can, that the community can also access it?
Yes, it is being recorded.
Okay.
And so we will have it available. But can you also post the presentation itself? Yes, we can post that. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful if you can post the presentation on somewhere and then, um, people can look at it. One other question I had quickly is that, uh, uh, do we have a general estimate as to what the numbers would look like in the classrooms? I know that that's all clearly very up in the air, um, but is there a general, can we, can we predict like, let's say if ninety percent are gonna head back? You know, what, what kinda, is there like a maximum number of students that we're allowing in classrooms or how's that gonna look?
So again, we, the county, the county public health department is not providing a capacity limit. That we need to abide by. Um, there are some inherent problems with doing that countywide. Because again, um, saying there should be fifteen or twenty students really is dependent on the, the size of the classroom. As well, um, and so what we're looking at is looking at all of our spaces. And ensuring that we're able to provide the space needed to allow for distancing within those classrooms. By being creative with our furnishings and our use of that space. But we do not have a number right now that we are working off of as far as a requirement. Um, or a limit restricted by the county office, uh, or by the county public health department. But based on that thirty-five hundred number that Jason gave, you must have a, you could calculate what the ratio would be if those came to bear. Right, Jason?
Yeah, yes, I think one of the things that, that, you know, we'll have a much. Yeah, yes, I think one of the things that that, you know, we'll have a much better idea come the first week of August. But I I think that's safe to say. I mean, if you just take the log of numbers and we have, you know, a hundred and seventy two sections, a hundred and seventy six sections. I'd say there'd probably be about, you know, uh, ten percent less students in those classes. So, you know, two to three students per class uh, reduction. So it would bring, you know, our our K three numbers down to probably the high teens and and our upper grade classrooms closer down to the low twenties.
Thanks. And have we, have we kind of gone to the classrooms and to mark that out? And I I understand it's gonna be obviously a difficult. Situation like it's keeping kids six feet apart is is, you know, particularly the younger ones will be, it will be quite a monumental task. But it have we kind of looked into that? What's the, what does a classroom look like in terms of spacing? How, what, how, how much space is there? Is that possible to distance six?
Yes, it is possible and we are looking at that. And again, so much of this will need to uh, be determined as we move forward with our enrollment. And as we learn more about the number of students that will be opting into our distance learning program. But we are, we will be continuing this work over the summer and working with our leadership team to. Look at specific campuses and look in specific classrooms and really determine um, what our needs are in in each, on each site.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chi, while we're.
Please, Shelley, go ahead.
We're really looking forward to to getting our teachers' eyes on it as well. Because when we go into classrooms and we see teachers and we see how they operate their classrooms. Many of the diagrams we've seen don't align with with how our classrooms actually look. We don't have our students sitting in desks um, facing straight ahead, and that's what many of the diagrams look like. I believe that when our teachers get in classrooms and they look at the furniture they have available to them. And when they start to think about how their students really engage in the environment, we see students under countertops. Over, sitting over in corners with a a laptop, um, a piece of equipment to ride on. We see them over in a library. So I think there are. Really great ways in our very spacious rooms and with low class sizes that we will be able to socially distance rooms, uh, students. Without marking out squares in classrooms. But really working to educate our teachers and our students about what does that distance look like? And so that we can help them be good storage of of that space and um, kind of self monitor along with their teacher to assist them.
Thanks. Uh, lastly, I started to monopolize the time. I just, lastly, one more question is that. And so I, my understanding is that it sounds like we're gonna try to keep everyone in cohorts. Try to, it sounds like you want to keep the. The individual class together as much as possible. That, how does that look in terms of recess, in terms of lunch? Are they staking together then? Or is this gonna be, release the kids out to go to lunch and then, or or we're gonna stagger it a little bit?
That that's, that is uh, most likely the, what we've been considering is staggering lunch and recess times. Again, the idea of the small cohort staying together is to reduce the risk of transmission between groups. So um, if if there is a situation of an exposure that it's contained within a small group of people and not. Kind of cross contaminating across different groups. So that we would be looking at different options for lunch and recess, staggering those times, and again, utilizing all of our available spaces.
A a good example of what that could potentially look like, we had a speaker earlier this evening who's who spoke to um. The usage of the field and there being a very small number of children using the Sycamore Ridge campus right now. There are actually eighty seven children attending camp daily at Sycamore Ridge. But the way they're utilizing the outdoor space is allowing for cohort groups of students to use different spaces at different times. So we don't see them congregating in large groups all at one time. So. We'll have to think about what that's going to look like when our students come back to school. But but that's an example of. Cohorts using the play structure during this period of time and then some sanitizing in between. And then it it goes to another grade level or another cohort.
And it's working very successfully with our camps right now and our um, like I said, our MO and F. Our staff has done a great job of creating schedules to be available to clean any of those spaces in between use. And so. Yes, we're looking to our our camps right now as models for how to do that when we come back in the fall because they're doing a great job.
Can I ask a clarifying question on what what uh, we were just discussing? Earlier, there was mention of a phrase circles of contact. And and then we have, you know, the idea of social distancing. I I guess I'm, I'm wondering within classrooms, are you really saying that kids will be six feet apart at all times? Or um, is it more that you kind of accept that the kids in a certain cohort, however many like high teens or low twenties. Are gonna have a certain level of exposure to each other. Um, and then if you are saying that they're supposed to be six feet apart, does that mean that you're telling kids like they cannot, you know. Be sit next to each other to work on something and they literally have to be all spaced out in a classroom?
You know, and I, I have, you know, we have given so much thought to this that as far as, you know, what is good for children and what is practicable? And um, what keeps them healthy and safe all around. And so when we think about. Social distancing and what the guidelines are saying, it is about making that attempt to have them social distance and also. The practicable part talks about, really speaks to the child. And that's where the cohort piece comes in and keeping sta- stable groupings. Because we also know the be, you know, child behavior, well, we want to change some behaviors and actually. Influence hand washing and sanitizing and actually change behaviors in that way. We also know that childhood behaviors that actually increase and promote social development are very healthy for kids. And we don't want to have an impact of social distancing that would be so negative as to counter that and the social development of children. So that's why. Really using a combination is what the Health Department is saying between the social distancing, the use of cohort groups. And obviously face coverings where it seems practicable really makes a difference. And so. We're looking at all of that in in the interest of making sure that our children's best interests are kept in mind at all times because. It still needs to be a place where children are children and we understand that.
Thank, thank you for that. Yeah, I just, I worry about the developmental impacts, especially for small children. One thing adults, we we've, we're used to being. You know, able to be together. And so once. Social distancing is over, we'll know how to do that. But when small children are just learning how to interact with each other in this kindergarten and lower grades. Can you just discuss the developmental impacts that they're not allowed to actually be with each other?
Shelley or Jenny, I mean, there's definitely a a con- a concern about that and we're paying close attention to that.
There, there is a concern about that. And so I I think that um. Being mindful of the the fact that it's, it's not one health and safety measure by itself. So, so for example. We have all all the options of social distancing, really good hygiene. And face coverings when social distancing isn't possible or practical. And so if students are going to be in very close proximity together. That would likely be a time where our teachers would encourage children to use face coverings, but that they can still engage. And in fact, that's what's going on um, at our summer camp. Face covers are required by the adults, but children are encouraged to wear face coverings and they're not required. I I think that that it's, it's really, really important for us to to think about that so that children can socially engage. And that they're not fearful if their face covering slips down or I, you know, it really changes a dynamic when a teacher goes from. Leading the learning in the classroom to policing space and policing face coverings. That that really isn't a healthy environment for children to return to. So back to your point, Erica, I think you talked about keeping cohorts of students together. That so we can minimize risk of exposure with all of those good health and safety practices. But but we are never going to be able to eliminate risk of exposure. It's always going to be there. It's, it's there every day. When our children step outside their house, they go to a grocery store, they go to a beach. So we are trying to take all of the recommendations and combine them and put them all in use when it makes sense. For young children so that they can return to school and have as as much as normal um, school experience when we come back in the fall.
Thank you. Scott, did you have questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. I, I just want to make sure that you're doing more, more of a comment. I just want to make sure you're doing. Uh, very good training, especially for face coverings. Um, because my, my issue with the face coverings, I know is is mandated. The uh, having worked in a biosafety lab, I understand if you don't do things properly, your risk of cor- contamination is very high. And it actually can do more harm than good. I mean, I see people having it down below their nose and they're breathing in everything anyway. They're touching their face covering, they're going underneath the face covering. Uh, people, the other, my other issue is that people with um. Face coverings are less likely to wash their hands or take other precautionary measures too because they feel safe. I've got a face covering. So just having, especially for the teachers that are wearing it, um, making sure they understand how to wear it properly. Because if you don't wear it properly, you do more harm than good. And that, that's really my just comment along the way. And it's kind of goes along with. The kids, encourage them uh, to wear it. But again, if they can't wear it correctly, they're probably doing more harm than good. So just my two cents worth.
Thank you.
Catherine or Di, do you have questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. Thank you so much, Jenny, for your presentation. And it, yes, it would be really great to have that available on the website for us to refer back to. My questions are first, um, for the Back to School Committee. How can parents participate and share ideas and thoughts with that committee as well as teachers?
We do have teachers on the committee and like Shelley said, we will be reaching out because. Really getting the input from teachers about how to utilize the spaces is going to be very important as we move forward. And we're absolutely looking at, um, at first I've heard from quite a few parents. Um, I encourage parents to continue to reach out to me um, so that we can hear that voice and consider it when we're working on our committee. And also uh, reach out and do some community outreach to our parents to get some feedback and input as we move forward.
Okay, great. Would it be possible in the future to have a parent or a couple of parents be an actual part of that committee as well?
I I would think that, yes, I don't see why that would not be. Of course, we could have um, its parent input or ask for parent volunteers as we look at particular. Aspects moving forward.
Great. Also, you mentioned that, and and we know that the um. The the health updates are coming down the line frequently. So how can parents and community members stay informed? How are, what are we as a district doing to make sure that that information is available to parents without them having to search for it?
Um, I am attending weekly tele briefings with the HHSA and the Department of Public Health. I know Holly is as well. And that we have been utilizing our weekly updates to update the community, our weekly videos to update the community. But also as we did beginning in January, when we first started hearing about coronavirus. And I first, that's when I first began communicating with our community and our staff and families about coronavirus and. Precautions for flu season. We really started that in January. I would do the same as we get updated information. We can send that out through Blackboard. And as we have new information, we will also be updating um, on our weekly updates through our videos.
Yeah, can we, can we post it on our website? Just so, so.
Yes.
All community members who are interested. Okay, great.
We do have COVID nineteen link on our website, so we can update as we get information to that site directly.
Perfect. And then um. My last question is regarding hand washing stations. I don't know if all classrooms have sinks. I'm imagining there's a few that don't. And so um. I mean, I'm not a scientist, but I, I just know personally, I like the soap and the water and I get the hand sanitizer thing. I use it too, but um. What can we do to um, make sure that students and staff. Can easily access soap and water?
Um, you're correct. Soap and water is definitely the the best defense first and foremost. And then the hand sanitizer would be only if there. Was not an availability to wash your hands. But we are looking at classrooms and spaces that don't, the classrooms that don't have sinks in their room. And those would be the first areas that we would be providing our hand washing stations. So we have ordered some of those that we're trying out and we're gonna be assessing that need throughout the district. So that we do have hand washing available for students if there isn't um, a sink in their classroom.
Okay, great. Thank you. Keep up the good work. I know it's a lot.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment about the hand washing thing really quick. Just, just for for fun, I mean, I was reading an article today about how uh, some teachers are encouraging it um, through summer camp and like they might actually. Like stamp, put a stamp on or something like that and have the kids wash off the stamp. Um, and and and, you know, or make like a little mark on there. So that kind of gets the kids to, you know, have something to do while they're washing off their hands. And then so I just thought that was really interesting. You know, encouraging hand washing is a great thing, I think.
I had a comment. Um, I just, I, somebody spoke about having an IEP and uh, how they feel that some of the uh, items that were on the IEP were somewhat diminished. During this period. And I want to make sure as we move forward implementing these things that we keep an eye on those students that have. Uh, extra needs or or on an IEP that we um. Are are considerate of the fact that perhaps somebody who needs to read lips, for example, can't do that with a face covering and 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 things of that nature. So keep that in mind. I know that they have clear masks and you mentioned something about face shields too that might help in that situation. But I wanna, I wanted to to be cognizant of that.
That is definitely, like I said, we are looking at the impact um, on our vulnerable students. So. Foster youth, homeless uh, students who are experiencing homelessness as well as our students with disabilities. So I'm working very closely with our special education team. We're looking at, I think the question that the parent asked was, will services be provided next year? Absolutely, we will be providing special education services next year, either through the distance learning platforms or in person. But all students who need special education through an IEP will be receiving services. I can't speak to an individual student and what um, was happening or will happen for that student, but. Absolutely, we will be providing special education services.
And and one last point, and that is that uh, we've received a number of emails, I think all of us have. Uh, about concerns during COVID with the relocation of the Delmar Heights students. But I want to point out that your plan includes those students at these locations. It's not gonna change simply because those students are there. We're gonna maintain the same safety precautions and move forward. With those students there. Uh, so the parents shouldn't worry that they're any less strict because there's a combination of of children in those schools.
Absolutely. Our cleaning and sanitation and health precautions remain the same across the district. Regardless of um, the closure of Delmar Heights, they will not have an impact. On our procedures and guidelines and following the health restrictions across all of our schools.
Thank you, and thank you for your detailed presentation.
Thank you.
Um, Jenny, you you were talking about what would happen if there's a positive case of a teacher or a student, and you discussed that a little bit. But i- in that case, would that, would that cohort shift to distance learning for a fourteen day quarantine period, for example?
Well, our distance learning, Shelley will talk more about this in her presentation, but our distance learning program will really be a separate program with its own teachers and a trained staff. So if there is a a situation where a classroom needs to isolate. It or quarantine, it would be more of an independent study sort of remote learning program as we did. Before, so it would be with that same teacher, that the, that group of students would then. Do and more of an independent study model through a remote learning, but not sliding in and out of our distance learning program because it would not be aligned. To the curriculum that they're teaching in that program. So it would still rely on that teacher's. So it would still rely on that teacher's um sc- classroom schedule and curriculum.
Right. And we can talk more about this because it's coming up on distance learning, but but I don't mean shifting in and out of the other distance learning program. I mean, for that teacher and those kids, when you say it's just going to be the same as it was this spring, would there be an opportunity for those teachers to then implement a more robust learning during that time break? Because it's going to happen that somebody would, you know, somebody's parent or somebody, you'll you'll hear that that a certain cohort has been affected. And so then you have to anticipate that there'll be two week periods throughout the year where whole classrooms will have to move to remote learning.
Absolutely. I think that as we move forward, that will be part of the planning process for all of our classroom teachers to be prepared for um accessing any student learning platforms. And the that's part of our planning that they would be able to move into a uh remote learning experience based on what they're doing in the classroom and any student platforms that they're already using.
Um I'll just, thank you, Jenny. I'll add to that. We um we have um some things that will be in place with distance learning that will assist with that. So we're acquiring some additional curriculum specifically designed for a distance format that our teachers, our classroom teachers, if there's a fourteen day quarantine period for their class, they would be able to utilize that curriculum to um help with continue the learning at home. We also are professional learning. We have offered leading edge certification. For any teacher who is interested, we had more than a hundred and ten teachers across the district sign up for this leading edge certification. And that that professional learning is focused on online and um distance learning practices. So um becoming really adept and skilled with what are um not only the platforms that are effective to be used, but also the effective practices that should be in place in a remote situation. We are also taking steps to ensure that every child kindergarten through sixth grade has quick access to a device. And so our primary students having iPads available and our second through sixth grade students having Chromebooks available.
Okay, thanks. I want to make sure we take Lori Glazer. Um and then if there are any more comments after that, we can also discuss.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you. My name's Lori Glazer, and I have two children at uh Delmar Hills. And first, I want to thank you all for uh the time and energy that you have put into um all of this during the pandemic. Um and I really appreciate that. Um I want to first start by saying that I am one hundred percent in support of the rebuild at Delmar Heights. Um I have always been in favor and welcoming of the Heights kids. In fact, in the first meetings that we had um on what we're going to do with the Heights kids, um I was one of the first people um to speak up and talk about the many positive things that will come along with welcoming the Heights kids to our campus. Additionally, I've been involved in discussions and planning about um about ways in which our school can welcome and integrate the two schools rather than being two separate schools on one campus. So my comments tonight don't have to do with whether or not I'm welcoming or our community is welcoming of the Heights kids. It has to do with one thing only, and that's seriously considering if it is the wisest thing to increase campus size during a global pandemic, where it's known that social distancing is one of the most important factors for de- decreasing virus spread. One thing I think we've all learned and what has been said repeatedly by board members, by um district staff is that things are always changing and we have no idea what's in store for us. Um in fact, I don't think I was in the minority when at the beginning of March, I thought there's no way that schools will close. That was just one, the first of many things um that happened that I never thought I would see. And so I think it's pretty clear that the only constant is that there's no constant. Things are continually changing. In light of that, I think it's best to keep all of the options opened, open. And one of those options is the continued use of space at Delmar Heights. At the very least, any decision to demolish existing structures should wait until the district has the final numbers of onsite versus distance learning. And it can be seen, one uh just a couple of weeks ago, it was forty percent that wanted distance learning. Now it's just ten percent. And I don't think that we're going to know the final numbers until we know what's actually in store for us. Um with the plan to maximize indoor space that was in the slides that were presented, it seems to me that using the additional campus is the best way to effectively create a social distance atmosphere. I think that a lot of things need to be answered before you demolish an existing site that can no longer be used. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um are there additional questions or comments from board members on this topic? Okay, um then we will move on to item seven point two, Board Report on the Distance Learning Program. And Shelley Peterson will lead that.
All right. Good evening. I'll just wait for, again, I guess I haven't left since I said good evening the first time. I'll wait for that first slide to come up. Um I am really excited to talk to you about our distance learning program, and that program is called Launch. So instead of just saying distance learning, it is referred to as Launch, and um students participating in that program will be Launch students, and we will have Launch teachers. Next slide, please, Chris. Our our Launch program is based on the Guiding Principles of District Design twenty twenty-two. It is robust, it is comprehensive, and it is a distance learning program available to DMUSD students kindergarten through sixth grade. It's a separate program within DMUSD available to enrolled students for the twenty twenty-one school year. Next slide, Chris. Thank you. The details of Launch include um our own credentialed teachers will make up the staff of the Launch program. They will be trained to facilitate distance learning. The instructional calendar will align with our district calendar. So all of the the breaks and the start of school, the end of school, all of that will be consistent. There will be a consistent school day within the Launch program with daily attendance required. And parents and guardians should be prepared to commit for one year. Returning to the school of residence should the situation change with um COVID and we get back to what we know as a is a more familiar way of engaging with our in-person learning. Um returning to school of residence during the twenty twenty-one school year is based upon space available, and it is not guaranteed. The Launch students and staff will not be affiliated with a physical school site, but they will rather they will belong to the Launch program. Next slide, Chris. So our staffing and training, based on our current registration confirmation, as Jason said, we have about four hundred families currently who have confirmed that their preference is for distance learning for the the twenty twenty-one school year. There is an estimated need of approximately six sixteen distance learning teachers. And our teaching staff will include education specialists and staff necessary for students in special education so that we can um provide students with their um their learning according to IEPs. And it will also include STEAM specialists. Uh interested teachers did complete an application and staff will be finalized this week. The way we will staff the program is based upon interest, both from parents um and then from our teaching staff, grade level needs, and the content needs of the distance learning program. And professional learning will include leading edge certification along with professional learning we will provide internally. Next slide, please. Parent and guardian participation. So online, daily, that live synchronous instruction will be combined with asynchronous instruction and independent learning tasks. Parents and guardians play a very large part in students being successful in this program. And parents and guardians will need to take an active role in the daily teaching of their child. And the support of the learning needs of their child is essential to the success in Launch. Next slide, please, Chris. Um our pedagogy and instructional practice will align to the degree possible with in-person instruction and what our students experience in our um at our physical school sites. Current curriculum like Wonders and CGI will be used in addition to curriculum uh designed for a distance learning model. So we are looking at I-ready math and I-ready needing um I-ready reading. Both of those programs are adaptive according to student needs, and they have embedded assessments within them. And students will receive STEAM plus content in identified disciplines. Google Classroom will be used as the learning management system to facilitate communication and organize content. And we will have a Google site, so there will be a specific website for the students and families who participate in Launch next year. And in-person assessments and support will be scheduled according to individual student needs. We do anticipate that there will be in-person um communication and contact with a Launch teacher at the or that, you know, that classroom teacher that will be assigned to a group of students. And we will facilitate, if parents still aren't comfortable with that, um we will facilitate that that one-on-one and that communication based on student need and family need um electronically if we have to. Next slide. And that is our Launch logo for our program this year, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I just ask Shelley, um this is amazing that you've put all this together in addition to all the planning for for in-person school. So thank you to you and the team and all the teachers and everyone who's been involved with um developing this Launch program. Um I wonder if we, I I I'm really also very happy to hear that it sounds like well over a majority of teachers signed up for a distance learning instruction. I forget the name of it. Um so can you just talk about, you know, what happens in the scenario where suddenly we have to, everybody has to go home? And suddenly everyone has to be in distance learning, but not the Launch program? Uh how do you, you talked about it a little bit before, but I just want to, you know, understand that you guys are planning for that potential scenario.
Uh we are, and it's one of the reasons we looked at additional curriculum specifically designed for distance learning or a remote situation. Um in addition to, which can be used and can be supplemented with the programs that we use in our classrooms. And we anticipate that our Launch teachers will do that as well. But if we have a a short period of time, there is curriculum that will be ready to grow, go that our classroom teachers will have the opportunity to access and get quickly in place for our students. Um additionally, we are looking at science curriculum Amplify, which uh our Launch teachers will be piloting this year. And hopefully, we'll have some of some of our brick and mortar teachers pilot that as well, because that has a distance um component to it as well. And I I think different than what we experienced this year, our teachers will be coming back. We have the opportunity for professional learning. We know now how to prepare if we have that immediate shutdown and what it could look like. So that is a a definite focus for our instructional services program to ensure um if we have the what-ifs or the inevitable, how do we seamlessly shift? What do our students need to go home with? And in fact, you know, right now, first day of school, we can already begin thinking these are the hard copy materials we will want to send home with our students. We didn't even have that opportunity this year um because our students were gone and and what we could get to them was technology. So we will be thinking ahead of time, kind of like that, um you know, emergency backpack that we will have the the, not an emergency backpack for each child, but knowing what we need to have at the ready should we experience a brief closure.
So in conjunction with that, I just had a quick question. Like if i- if, and my understanding is if you're uh if there's a case or something, then your the idea is to close down that one particular class or uh wherever that infection is and try to isolate that group. Um what happens if people uh feel uncomfortable, like say they're in a classroom nearby or they were like in a similar kindergarten class? Maybe there was some sort of playing with with your kids or something like that. What if happened? They feel uncomfortable yet their class isn't shut down. What do we do for those people if they have additional concerns?
Mm-hmm. Well, just like we do now, if children are sick or um they aren't attending school, we do have independent study. And so I, what I imagine is that teachers would be able, kind of that that situation I just described, they would be able to have some really effective practices in place for students who don't come to back to school or don't feel comfortable coming to school. Um and get those up and running for students so that what that students was experiencing at home, if they weren't coming to school, um more closely mirrored what was happening in the classroom. And um you know, as Jenny mentioned, we will, we will follow all of the guidelines and the directions, should that happen, of Health and Human Services. But there are, there may be people over the course of the year that just say, you know, I'm not comfortable. I I'm not going to send my child to school. And in fact, that happened before school closure. We did have families contact us who who just said, you know, we're not comfortable sending our child to school. And what we did was put them in an independent study format.
Yeah, that's great. Appreciate it. I think part of it is, I think maybe uh some parents may be concerned about potentially getting penalized or something like that if they if they're uh don't send their kids back to school or or they're uncomfortable yet they don't. Um you know, they they're not sure what to do if they take their kids out, like what's going to happen to them? I think that might be part of the um concern.
Yeah, and and what we want to ensure is that students get as much learning as they can possibly get in whatever format that looks like. And I think we are far better equipped to to tackle that in August with everything we've learned from March through June about what a remote situation looks like. Uh our teachers really did an exceptional job. And I think they will be very prepared to manage that should it happen um either, you know, for a whole class or if they have a few students throughout the year that are unable to participate in person.
So what happened, I know you have, the distance learners are committed for the full year. Uh things changed. So if you're in the classroom and you're uh in the in-classroom training and like we've had right now, all of a sudden you see people get worried because they see coronavirus cases going up. Uh they say, I want to go to remote learning. Can they switch from in-classroom to remote mid-year?
Uh that would depend on if we have space available. So we'll staff our distance learning program. And we will staff according to um what is determined through our contract and in partnership with DMCCA. But what we can't do is take a a Launch teacher and load their classroom to thirty-five at a certain grade level because all of a sudden everybody wants to move over to remote learning or just the Launch program. So I think we'll have to evaluate should that happen and um we see increased numbers. But we really are committed to um maintaining class sizes uh so that 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 really robust Launch program is is doable and outstanding for the the students in the program who sign up and for the educator who's going to be responsible for teaching that class.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um we need you for two more reports. So so I don't know. And Lester will have more questions on this one. I guess we should move on to the STEAM plus update, item seven point three.
Right, great. Just wait for that to come up. Thank you, Chris. So um you know, as we think about next year, STEAM plus is absolutely a piece of that. So, um, you know, as we think about next year, STEAM Plus is absolutely a piece of that thinking and, and rethinking actually due to some of the guidelines that we are facing. But let's talk about STEAM Plus in general. Next slide, please, Chris. We've actually for several years tried to rethink the structure of STEAM Plus and how we can, could create, um, you know, a program that was really equitable and met the needs of all students. So some of the comments we heard from staff is that the, the rigid scheduling of STEAM Plus really didn't provide, um, often for in-depth learning in a content area and it lacked flexibility. We heard that from staff that it lacked the time needed to collaborate both with one another, the specialists within a content area as well as con-classroom teachers. And that program expectations varied widely among school sites. And, and when I say that, I mean, um, you know, what the expectations were for a music program at one site versus a music program at another site. If you had an itinerant staff member, it really, um, stretched them in several different directions and, and was very challenging and is very challenging when that happens, when we lack program alignment. What we heard from parents is that program experiences vary widely among school sites. You know, we have a wonderful community. We have a very connected community. And when parents hear about something wonderful happening at one site, they want that same wonderful to happen at their site for their child as well. We heard about lack of arts programs at some schools due to how we allocate FTEs and, um, how we are able to, um, equitably, um, determine where we have enough funding, enough FTEs so that we can have, um, specialists in all of the content areas. We've heard about a desire for student choice. When students get older, we hear, well, they would like to do more music and less science. Or they would like more art and less technology. So we, we heard very strongly from parent groups that they want students to have a lot of exposure in the primary grades, kindergarten through, say, third grade, fourth grade. But for maybe fifth, sixth, that students have an opportunity to opt into their content areas. And then we've heard from parents about content, can some content and should some content occur in the classroom? Um, an example of that now, particularly after our experience from March through June, is with technology. And how much students have learned, how skilled they are, and just the use of technology versus actual computer science. So, so what might that look like as we move into the future? Next slide, please. So we actually, during the nineteen twenty school year, we actually had a STEAM Plus advisory committee that was up and running. And, um, our, the objective of that committee was to create a STEAM program that allows for program equity among all DMUSD school sites and includes an articulated approach to content. So every child experiences opportunities within all STEAM Plus areas. And that, that isn't happening right now at all, um, eight of our school sites. And so we, we created this committee. We had, um, content specialists from representative of, uh, most schools throughout the district and all content areas. And some of the things we tackled are on the next slide. Chris, please. So that, that advisory committee, we wanted, we began to start to reimagine the program delivery by asking some questions. So what content can be co-taught in a classroom? So integrated technology versus labs. Could a teach, could a technology teacher be in a classroom and actually teach, teach those technology skills embedded within content? Um, what about science in the classroom? We agree, students should have science. They should have more science. And science does belong in the classroom as part of the regular curriculum with the regular classroom teacher. And then we looked at what content is best delivered in a pull-out model. So science labs. So we know that it takes time to get the materials together, to set up a lab and to have a lab experience that supports the learning of the content. Um, and so we do believe that a lab experience is important for grade levels and we had that conversation. There's a lot of conversation about choice-based art studios. So when you're teaching technique and when you're, you're, you're bringing all of those art techniques to students and the, the different media, can we achieve our same goals and a child's experience in art when they have some choice? It, what if they don't like painting? Is there another way for them to learn about art in a manner that really suits them and that they enjoy? Um, music, music in a pull-out model. We don't have very many of our classroom teachers that would say they are confident enough, um, nor have had enough training to teach the music standards in their classroom. And so that makes sense for us to be in a pull-out model. Also, physical education. Our teacher, our classroom teachers have limited time in, in preparing and learning and understanding a variety of standards and a variety of content. So when we start to look at, well, where do we want their headspace? Do we want it in science? Or do we want them, um, learning the PE standards? And so we thought about, is that better in a pull-out model? A physical, our physical education to happen with specialists who know and understand the standards and can manage equipment and skills. Next slide, please, Chris. So with those questions and those conversations, the advisory committee went back and forth. Those representatives went back to their school sites. They went back and had conversation with their, their content specialists. And so we set about, thinking about what some prototype schedules might look like so that we could create some more flexibility and we could achieve some of those things we talked about on the previous slide. So we said, how might we rethink schedules to accommodate student needs and developmental differences? Uh, do all grade levels need a weekly science lab experience? Or are there differences between the needs of a kindergarten student and a fourth or fifth grade student when it comes to a weekly lab experience? Can technology be effectively integrated with grade level content in the classroom? Can students have more experiences with PE specialists? And how could we create schedules that allow for choice among older students? And in, is there an effective way to authentically integrate some content? So we began to grapple with all of these questions. We began to think about what some schedules would look like that provided us with flexibility. And, um, we generated some different models. We identified some school sites where we could prototype these models. We identified three school sites to prototype these models. Um, Chris, next slide. And then COVID nineteen happened and it stopped us dead in our tracks. We couldn't move forward with really playing out these different models. And we had planned to, um, implement them during the twenty twenty-one school year, evaluate the successes and then scale those effective changes across all the eight school sites. So trying to think about a silver lining, the pandemic is forcing us to rethink delivery models because of the health and safety guidelines we have in place. Um, and in an expedited manner and provides us with the opportunity to rethink our models while adhering to all of those health and safety guidelines. So we're thinking about, well, if, if students can't go through a lab, one class after another, then what does it look like? Do we have more concentrated periods of time in a lab model? Do we assign grade levels to a lab for a period of the year and then it moves to another grade level? Next slide, please, Chris. So we have a number of questions we have to address. How might we effectively integrate content in the classroom setting for some grade levels using a co-teaching model and provide a lab experience for other grade levels? How might we authentically integrate some content areas and increase students' experiences with the design thinking process? There's some really great ways that our teachers, along with our specialists, have tackled design thinking and integrated specific standards in some of our STEAM Plus content areas. And then how might we increase every student's time and exposure to a robust arts program that includes music and art throughout the year? We have some schools where, um, the music program has been for only certain grade levels and only for a certain part of the year. And that's something we know that we want to build up is music and art to ensure that the arts are rich and robust at every school site. We were down to, um, three music teachers to, among eight schools. And, um, we know that just doesn't get the job done when we're talking about exposing students and giving them a rich experience with music. So how can we shift our program to ensure that's included? And then how might we create choice options for students in grades four through six? And how will we develop schedules to ensure STEAM Plus content for every child while ensuring the health and safety of students and staff? So our next steps, Chris, next question, are to determine staffing needs, final STEAM allocation. So we allocate based on, on staffing and enrollment. And we just don't have that finalized yet. And we know we need to get there so that we can start making decisions about program. But to some of the comments earlier in the evening, um, we, no school is going to go without science or any of the other content areas. It's looking at how we can, um, utilize and hire where we need to, to ensure that every school has experiences in all five content areas. And in fact, the STEAM specialists, um, met on June eighth and generated, uh, they collaborated together in their content areas and then came together as a group and generated ideas about what their programs could look like. Given what we knew at that time about the health and safely guy, health and safety guidelines. Uh, no, thank you, Chris. Uh, so we're not there yet. We still have work to do. Um, I was delighted to hear about the, the check from the foundation. And, um, we're excited to continue to think about and rethink and determine how we're going to make this happen in all five of our content areas. Uh, this really rich program where all students can participate, where our teachers, our STEAM specialists can collaborate among themselves and with classroom teachers. And where can we institute some co-teaching, especially if our specialists may be working with the classroom teacher in the classroom space? So all of those things are, are at play. And we're also mindful of how much time, um, our students can be quote-unquote out of class. That might not be what it looks like for, um, when we start the school year, but we really have to balance that, that core curriculum with our STEAM Plus content. And a way to do that is through integration in some of our STEAM Plus content areas. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. That sounds incredibly complicated. And then doing it in a pandemic, I mean, my head is spinning. Um, but let me see if anybody has any questions.
Hi Shelley, um, I, yeah, again, I commend you for all the efforts you guys are putting into this. And of course, the pandemic has definitely thrown a wrench into, into things, but as you say, it's a silver lining because, I mean, with everything right now, we're just having to rethink, uh, way, the way things are structured. And I definitely am a, a proponent of, um, design thinking or project-based learning and incorporating arts and sciences and music into the everyday curriculum that's going on in the classroom. So I, I really like that approach. Um, and I, I'm a big proponent of music. And so I'm, I'm happy to see that, um, you guys are thinking about ways to integrate more music teachers throughout the district. Um, I remember going to music, I think it was all throughout elementary school at Delmar Heights. Um, so, and, and I, I know my kids love it at their preschool. They love ORF. So, um, I'm, I, whatever you can do to keep music going throughout the district, I'm, I'm all for that. Um, so thank you for sharing what you guys are doing right now.
Thank you. I have to say, just before we move on, it's, it's with a great team. I'm the one here presenting, but with Jessica Morales and Vivian. And I also really have to commend our STEAM Plus advisory team. Um, you know, they took on some challenges and we had hard conversations and we're not there yet. I think we can all agree on that, but, um, there, you know, we're really starting to shift our thinking as a result of those conversations and the pandemic and knowing that we are going to have to do business differently when we come back to the fall. So it's, um, it's, it's a great team with teachers and, uh, the other individuals in this department.
Thanks Shelley. And I know, I know that, um, we talked about this a little bit last meeting, but we first of all, are very appreciative of the, the DM, uh, the DMUSD, um, sorry, DMSEF for, um, and all the parents and folks who contributed the funds for STEAM Plus. So it's great to know that we'll have some, uh, solid funding for the program. But, you know, I, I think you heard us express that, you know, we, we want to provide a full STEAM program and we hope you'll bring to us your, your ask for what you, you want to, what you need staffing-wise to implement the program that, um, that you think is the best one and that teachers think is the best one. So just encourage you to, to dream big and, and show us what, uh, what it really can be.
Great. Well, we will, we will continue to do that.
Okay. So then let's move on to item seven point four with Shelley Peterson. Board report, DMUSD summer camps.
Yes. So just, just a quick update on our summer camps. I think it's particularly important, um, to talk about this out of time where our students really, with shelter in place and school closure and, um, the limitations on what they could engage in, um, from March really through, through June. So as you may know, our ECDC opened on May twenty-sixth for regular childcare. And, uh, and that really just started. That was the first opening we were allowed to have, um, with bringing students back to campus. And so we immediately, once we got the go-ahead for that and it looked like we were on a positive trajectory, we moved forward and, um, started implementing some of the conversations that we had been having about what might summer camp look like. So next slide, please, Chris. So our Early Childhood Development Center is running two summer sessions. And the first summer session is four weeks long from July twenty-second through July seventeenth. It's accommodating students in, from ages two to five years old. Just to give you an indication of how, um, the pandemic has really affected our programs. You can see for twenty twenty, this summer camp, we have ten, twelve children registered and attending um, for the first summer session. And in two thousand nineteen, we had thirty-eight children attending. Their second session will begin on July twentieth and run through August seventh. That one's three weeks long. Same age group of children. We have currently ten children enrolled in that program. And, um, in two thousand nineteen, we had forty-one children enrolled in that summer program. Next slide, please, Chris. But even with that, you can see here, we have kids that, uh, where really fun activities planned for them. They had a water day today. Um, they have dress-up days, superhero days. And so these kiddos look like they are all having a wonderful time. For, um, masks are not required for the students. The teachers do wear masks. Um, obviously Emily took it off for the photo there, you can see. But, um, they are having a great time engaging with one another and with their teachers. We have, um, currently four staff who are operating that program. Plus Bridgette Blazey is the director of that program. She's done an outstanding job meeting all of the California Community Care Licensing requirements so that we could operate a camp along with all of the, um, Health and Human Services safety guidelines. Next slide, please, Chris. We also have our after-school summer program camp, um, after-school program summer camp. That is running June fifteenth through August fourteenth. They have five sessions they're offering. The first one began on June fifteenth. That was a one-week session. And then they have four two-week sessions following that. Um, they have a hundred and fifty-five unique students registered for the first three weeks of camp. So that means no duplicates. And then um eighty-seven students per day, and then in parentheses, you see their week. Because when students enroll this summer camp this year, it has to be done according to a cohort. In previous years, students were able to drop in on a day. They could come on just the field trip day, or they could come on just a Monday and a Friday. But this year, when they register, they're registering for the entire week. And we have twelve students per class, and they are staying in that cohort of students for the week. We also have a hundred and twenty-seven students registered for virtual camp for the first two weeks. We instituted that this year through six crickets. So there are, I think there's like a hundred and twenty-four options of virtual camps that parents can sign up for. And unlike where you might just have an hour of um enrichment once a week. These are actual camps. There are cooking classes and yoga classes and art classes. There are so many options. It it really is amazing. So our students are also registering in that. Again, as you can see, this year, a hundred and fifty-five unique students. In two thousand nineteen, we had two hundred and eighty-six unique students registered over the course of the summer. And we had a hundred and forty students per day, so down significantly. Although I will tell you that both of these um programs will um, they are self-sustaining. So they are not deficit spending as the within the enterprise program as they're operating these camps this summer. Um, the after-school program camps for our school-aged children have really great themes like superheroes unite week. Sea sun surfing aloha week, universal adventures week, California dreamin' week. And then, of course, they do have the color games. So all of those really fun aspects of camp are um our team under the direction of Justin. Slagle is really, really doing a great job to try to maintain as much of that as they can. Um, next slide, please, Chris. And then here you just see some photos of students engaging in some camp activities. I think this one, this day was like dress as an animal or bring your animal spirit or or something like that. That the one that you see, the photo you see of students up in the upper right-hand. Corner, uh, do we uh uh like get to know you or let connect period? So what you see on that large TV up there in the corner are students from other classes who are also attending camp. So we have to keep them in their cohort, but they are having an opportunity to engage in that way. And then you see students out on the playground and in the classroom um looking like they're having a great time. And because they are not social distancing in some of those photos, you see the children wearing their masks. Next slide, please, Chris. They both uh, Justin and Bridget, for both of those summer programs, developed safe reopening plans. And part of those plans, per the safe reopening guidelines through the Health and Human Services Department, were increased disinfecting throughout the day. And then we disinfect overnight, temperature checks prior to entry. So as students get out of the car, they are greeted in by a program um staffer. And they are wearing the face shield so that they're greeted with a friendly face versus a mask. And then we do temperature check every child before they're able to come on campus. No, there is no visitor access. There's no visitor access to the campus, and there's no visitor access to the camps. We um or Justin and his program, they ordered individual student supplies, so they're not trading supplies throughout the day. They are the students, and when camp is over, they'll be able to take those with them. There's no in intermingling of student groups, and they have maximum group sizes of ten to twelve students. And then the next slide, please, Chris, and any questions?
I I have a question. When you take the temperatures of these children, do you record those temperatures anywhere?
You know what? That is a very good question. Um, I will have to ask that. I don't know the answer to that or not. I know they do here. Um, when we come to work, we get our temperature taken every day when we walk through the door, and I know that's recorded. But I don't know if we're doing that for our camp or ECDC. Justin Slagle just texted me and he said, no. They are not recording those temperatures.
I'm just wondering, um, if if anybody was to question whether we took the temperatures, wouldn't it make sense to record it? So that we have uh some fallback?
So they are recording that they have taken the temperature of every child. They're just not recording the actual temperature of every child.
Understood.
How long does that take to take the temperature? Is it like a quick kind of zap and then that's it?
Well, it it is a quick zap, but it it's not as quick as you might think it is. You know, because the child has to come, that I can just even speak as an adult. You have to come, you have to stand still. You have to hold the thermometer, depress the the handle, and then wait till you get a read and then read it. So while as far as temperature taking goes, it's pretty expeditious. But when you have to do multiple temperature checks all at one time, it it does slow down. So that's something we're really having to think through if we have um, you know, because we also can't have students congregate. So we have to be as quickly as we can. We do have to use the touchless thermometers that do scan, and we do have those in place for the after-school program and for our ECDC. And I know we've ordered them for all the school sites as well. But it if we were to do a a have to do a lot of children all at once, it would be a slow process.
So I'm just kind of wondering how is that gonna work when school reopening? Are we doing that like at the front gate? And like, you know, with a giant line, or is this like gonna be at individual classrooms? Um, what's gonna most be most expeditious and efficient way to do that?
We, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead, Holly.
That we're really um that we're having conversations with the county health department about. It will be interesting when the guides come out for safe schools reopening, because that is part of what we're expecting to be included. And when Shelley talked about the complication of, you know, needing to make sure that children are social distanced. And at the same time, process a lot of children with a temperature check, that that is, you know, um, a logistical challenge. So we'll be interested to see what some of the guidelines are that come out. That's a great question, Gia. And unless Shelley has a better answer, I know that it's a question we've all been.
It is a question. At camp, because they're only working with eighty-seven students um a day, and they don't typically all arrive all at once. Um, our after-school program staff actually takes the temperature before the children even exit the car. So.
Well, I I would imagine that you'd want that so the parent stays there, and if the child registers high, they just take him home.
Right, right. So we do have a lot of thinking we have to do before children walk through our doors on August twenty fourth.
Okay, Scott, do you have a question?
Question, how many thermometers do you have per uh per site then? Because that's gonna be your throughput.
Well, that and staff available to take temperatures and entry points, so we don't have children congregating in long lines. So we have multiple things that at play. Uh, I Jenny, I don't know if she's still here, but she can perhaps speak to how many thermometers we have. Um, I know we've we've just had a conversation about likely needing to order more thermometers. So that we can have multiple entry points and multiple temperature takers.
Shelley, would it, I mean, it would be like an honor system, but could we ask parents to help in this effort? When they're dropping their kid off and and, you know, they do the due diligence and take their child's temperatures before they get out of the car. And we we trust that they don't have a fever.
Yeah, we're we're Jenny might want to add to that, but we're hoping that as we get closer to August. There will will be some some self-monitoring guidelines that we ask parents to agree to. But um it it really is going to be at the end of the day what Health and Human Services and County of San Diego tell us we have to do. And then it will be up to us to figure it out. But that is one of the reasons we talked about um really advertising, if you will. For parents as part of the first day packet on our website via video, via handouts. Um, what parents have to look for and really asking parents to commit. And acknowledge that they know what they have to look for before they send their child to school and that they're agreeing um to those precautions. And and by sending their child to school, essentially saying that their child is well.
Okay.
Best of their knowledge.
I I would imagine that once you get this process down. Uh, that it goes quicker as as you get used to the process.
We're keeping our fingers crossed that it will.
Sorry, I have one last question. I know I'm trying not to drag everything along. I'm trying to, I know it's getting really late. What what one concern I did have was that has has anybody talked about liability issues? Um, in case somebody gets gets sick at some point, whether it be camp, whether it be um at school? And and has that been addressed? Like, have we talked to, is there coverage for insurances? How how does that work?
Uh, I can speak to that a little bit. I have been in some webinars with legal counsel. And there is anticipation, of course, for um lit litigation, um increased litigation because of COVID nineteen. But again, the law and the guidelines are really looking at spirit and collaboration of the law and the mandate. So really that we're doing the best that we can for our students and meetings and meeting students' needs across multiple areas. And implementing the guidelines to the extent practicable.
Thanks. Sorry, the lawyer in me just had to ask.
That's okay. I'm I'm following that as well.
Okay, thank you, instructional services team. Um, you guys have been doing a lot of work here and we'll give you a breather and get back to um Chris. I never want to let a meeting go by without another presentation for Chris. Thanks, you guys. Um, item nine point one is the board report on facilities.
Thank you very much. Um, board president Halpern, all members of the board, superintendent McClurg. I am getting started and running and I will.
And before you get going, just we do have four speakers on this that will take after uh the board has questions.
Sorry, the same issue last time. I might just leave it as a. Not full screen. Oh, there it goes. Okay, thank you. So again, uh, my facilities update for the month. In this month, we will be sharing about um Pacific Cones Ranch School number nine, Torrey Hill School Field Upgrade. Um, summer projects, including a couple of items from Delmar Heights School Rebuild. So I'll start with Pacific Cones Ranch School number nine, and the update this month is really uh some interesting next steps from the city regarding uh what they're calling McGonigal Park. And so if you look at uh this slide, this area up on the northwest uh of the property, the big property that we have now purchased. The southeast and southwest and northeast corner, this this uh sort of J-shaped area. This is what will be McGonigal Park. And um Pardee and the City of San Diego have started moving forward with planning for McGonigal Park. And they invited uh some of our district staff to a meeting. And uh this meeting just happened on the sixteenth. They had landscape architects, city planning, city parks and rec involved. And they shared a little bit of an update on where they are. They do not have uh any major drawings or plans, but they wanted. There it goes. Okay, thank you. So again, uh, my facilities update for the month. In this month, we will be sharing about um Pacific Cones Ranch School number nine, Torrey Hill School Field Upgrade. Um, summer projects, including a couple of items from Delmar Heights School Rebuild. So I'll start with Pacific Cones Ranch School number nine, and the update this month is really uh some interesting next steps from the city regarding uh what they're calling McGonigal Park. And so if you look at uh this slide, this area up on the northwest uh of the property, the big property that we have now purchased. The southeast and southwest and northeast corner, this this uh sort of J-shaped area. This is what will be McGonigal Park. And um Pardee and the City of San Diego have started moving forward with planning for McGonigal Park. And they invited uh some of our district staff to a meeting. And uh this meeting just happened on the sixteenth. They had landscape architects, city planning, city parks and rec involved. And they shared a little bit of an update on where they are. They do not have uh any major drawings or plans, but they wanted to speak with uh the districts. To talk a little bit about uh what our plans are for the space and what are what what we do when we work with uh our community and allowing our community use of our facilities. And then talk a little bit about the next steps they're taking. And so they have community workshops upcoming in late summer or early fall. They've asked to have some district participation in there. And we also talked about ensuring that as they're reaching out, uh, we have a contact list based on our work with the Pacific Cones Ranch community. I shared with them uh that the homeowners association was fairly involved during our process as well. And so they've committed to reaching out and making sure that the community is involved and aware of when those are coming up. And we'll be in the in the notes. We'll be able to share a little bit of information as well. And and then we discussed a little bit about potential school park connections. And uh we would envision, as we talked a little bit about, having uh sort of exits that come out onto the park, much like we have with the joint-use space, even though this will not be joint-use. So uh we we will own our piece and the city will own their piece, but there could be some connection for uh the end of the school day, uh the weekends and and items like that. So it was a good introductory meeting. Uh, it sounds like uh there will be some good planning. And we did bring up, I know it's come up in conversations and the board's asked about parking. Um, we did bring up parking and and potential needs. They will have some some, uh, it sounds like they will have some amount of parking as well on their site. And so uh as we learn more about it and we go through that process, uh, I would come back and share more with the board. Uh, the Torrey Hills Field Upgrade, we spoke a little bit about, uh, we shared an update last month, but I just wanted to share that this is. Uh, I appreciate the board approving the consent items, and that means that we will have a June twenty ninth pre-construction meeting with construction beginning right away. And so this this project will be uh built in basically the month of July. There may be a little bit of lag time with uh allowing the turf to settle and ensuring that we're not going to ruin it by having people on it immediately after the fact. Um, so we don't have an exact timeline for when it will be open for use to the school or the public. But by getting it done uh early in the summer, we should be able to have it have some of the time to sit and be ready for our schoolchildren when we get back to school. So that uh we can have space for students to play, space um for them to spread out when they they need to play and and also be able to social distance. So exciting to see this coming about and exciting to have some dates on the calendar for our initial meetings and the construction process to begin with. And then we uh have the portable placement for Delmar Hills. Uh, Delmar Hills has four portables. I I I wanted to share the location because um it's come up. These, it won't be catty corner. This was my um. Inability to make a really amazing design, uh, because I'm not an architect, but getting just the general area. So it'll be up at this this edge of the blacktop. And it does take up some space, but there's still a lot of blacktop space before basketball court, the volleyball court, other items. It will increase uh by approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet, classroom space in that site. Uh, we're also increasing sinks, so Mike Galas has been uh working on options. And we we are going to do something that is actually more permanent, that we can uh get running water and outflow of water to drainage. And uh touchless uh water so that we can uh allow students to wash. So there will be near each restroom area and in the lunch area, because we have the water in the spaces. That will add to the current capacity of uh of sinks that we have in those restroom areas and adds some in the lunch area. So we'll be adding those uh in the short term. We should have them installed over the next month. And then uh just looking at that increase of square footage, it does increase the actual building size beyond the size of Carmel, Delmar. Which is something we'd noted as we'd started to do this piece of planning. And uh as we look at the enrollment, the total now with the enrollment changes that we've seen with kindergarten and with the roll-up. Based on what Jason Romero shared earlier, right now our count is four hundred twenty-six students for the K-three height students and the hills students combined. This doesn't account for any students choosing a distance learning option. But that would be compared to, we had five hundred eighty students at Carmel, Delmar this year. So uh definitely have space there, and by increasing that classroom space, we will be able to provide spaces for our students. Even with spreading spreading students out. As we look at Ocean Air, we do have up here in the uh north end, this is the the one portable that will be added to that site. And that's about nine hundred and sixty square feet uh to a total of seventy-eight thousand six hundred plus square feet at Ocean Air. Um, there is an increase in sinks here as well, so we're looking at outdoor um near the restroom areas currently, as well as the lunch area at Ocean Air to add some some hand washing. And we're then doing that to look at uh options at our other school sites. So looking at these, but also then looking beyond at other school sites as we start back to the school year. And then an updated total Ocean Air Heights enrollment, based on the numbers we have today, is seven hundred seventy-nine. Again, not accounting for any students choosing to do distant learning, distance learning option. Should we have the ten percent? Obviously, that would. Um, should we have the ten percent? Obviously that would make a difference, but, but we won't know until August what's distance learning uh, enrollment looks like. And then uh, I, I wanted to share an update with coastal development with the, the board. District staff and consultants have, had started the process back in July of twenty nineteen and reaching out to the city and asking about unnecessary steps related to permitting. Um, we do have an application in with the city. Uh, but we have been informed that um, State Coastal has taken some interest. Uh, there may have been some conversations that have led to some more interest with State Coastal. And we are looking at an anticipated project delay. So that um, maybe to the end of July. Um, we, it's an anticipated delay. We uh, also anticipate having more information on that timeline uh, in the next approximately week or so. Uh, but if we did have a delay such as that, right, and it did push it out, our initial uh, demo timeline was to start in the beginning of July. It pushed it out to the end of July. That uh, would mean that we would likely be able to have students back on campus to start the school year. However, there would also likely be uh, some level of construction to finish out the project. Um, most likely in the multi-use room and/or the uh, finalizing areas of the northwest corner. Um, so there, there would be some impact related to that. And then other summer projects, we have uh, blacktop resurfacing uh, at Carmel Del Mar School, Sage Canyon School and Tory Hills School. Just a few pictures to show why we are, are going to a little further level. Um, slurry ceiling when you have uh, this kind of sort of decay uh, leads to that breaking up and some of the problems we saw at Ashley Falls a couple of years ago, the less, led to the resurfacing at that site. Carmel Del Mar and Sage Canyon will start in middle of July. Tory Hills, we are still working on the timeline based on the field upgrade and by having that initial meeting with uh, the, the team that will be building the Tory Hills Field will be able to then know when they anticipate being done because we need to make sure that we have all the trucks and other things that are going on to, to make adjustments to that field are off before we redo the blacktop, of course. And then in general, we have a number of summer projects. Carmel Del Mar Schools Conference Room has been expanded. I was just over there yesterday. Uh, adding some space. Uh, I know board members, you've, you've been to the conference room at Carmel Del Mar on board visitations and it's a really small conference room. Adding some space for uh, conferences, for meetings and for IEPs that makes it a little bit more amenable to, to groups being in there. Sage Canyon School, we have done some work in the library, um, to innovation center upgrades. Things like uh, making uh, some adjustments to the, the big library desks. So there's some more space. There's, they're going to install a little maker wall. And so some adjustments to um, further the work that Sage Canyon's done. We talked about an M U R audio video upgrade at Sage Canyon School back before, actually before uh, COVID nineteen. Um, it did delay a, a number of items, uh, some of the delivery and other pieces, but it has just been completed and tested out. So it was very exciting. The bottom left picture is actually the rack that is now in there. They showed some of the programming where, well, it looks complicated. We can kind of have a one-touch so that it doesn't become messed up. And then we'll be doing some training with uh, the staff that's site. And um, early August, so that we have a number of people there who are trained and ready to use it. And I know that'll be exciting for that site. And based on how that uh, rolls out and getting some use of it with the school site, we've talked about being able to do some, some further upgrades at Tory Hills School, Carmel Del Mar School, Sycamore Ridge School, who all have uh, some, some needs for their M U R audio video. And then District Ride, our phase one with the kindergarten first grade. Looking at uh, furniture and next steps, we have taken some steps with casework removal and flooring and painting. And so the uh, painting will be starting soon. Um, the flooring is on order. There was some casework, which actually will be a benefit as well because it will expand some space, casework that wasn't necessarily needed and actually expand space in some of those classrooms. And we have one class per grade level per site that we are working on in that respect. And Delmar High School, um, moving all staff to the satellite campuses has been completed. And uh, for the foundation, uh, foundation was located at Ocean Air School. However, with the need for the use of those portables, it has been relocated to Sage Canyon School. So we found space at Sage Canyon and a new home for our Delmar Schools Education Foundation. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Do we have questions before we get to public comment?
Quick questions. Is, are the Hills, the Heights students moving just to the portables or are they also, are their classrooms as well?
Both classrooms and portable classrooms. So there are uh, at both sites, there will be uh, students from the Heights in both uh, general classrooms and portable classrooms.
At the Hills, there is four portables. Like how many classrooms will there be in?
So they will be in uh, I believe three classrooms. I would have to look at the map to be exactly sure. Do you want it there? Right now, we're anticipating having the twelve uh, sections. That will also depend on our kindergarten enrollments. And if, you know, whether that goes in at a full three section. So there's a couple of those pieces that will be finalized based on the enrollment. Uh, and, and I believe we had three classrooms within the uh, the main building at Delmar Hills.
Thanks.
Okay. About the um, resurfacing of the blacktop spaces. Are we also incorporating new um, blacktop games?
Yes. So we've worked with the principal each time as we do that. And so uh, for example, last year with Ashley Falls, uh, we worked with the principal. Um, redoing some of the games, some of the colors, um, trying to, to make steps so that it, that upgrades as well. And it's just not a straight replacement of what was there. And so we, we work with the, the principal to get input and make uh, necessary changes there.
Okay, let's take um, Sandeep Patel followed by Rosanna Alroda Martin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, um, we've learned that some parents are circulating a petition to deny, deny our children the right to public education by trying to deny access to otherwise empty rooms. This is a low point in the history of our district and is meant to further harm our children who already suffer on the heels of a meeting where they're victims of a lawsuit from a tiny couple of money interests. If we want to go down the road for every school in itself, and if our children are to be further treated like outcasts by these parents, then the Heights itself must be quarantined off as an outcast colony, including its green parks and space with no one else centering. Which by the way, an empty school is a perfect time for a rebuild. You can't predict the future, but you can predict the present. We do not know what COVID nineteen, we do know that COVID nineteen has the least risk, risk to children. And that districts are opening up with appropriate safety measures. Even with the moves, both Hills and Ocean Air would be under capacity and the same policies that apply to any other school would be applied here. And then you're going to elect for distance learning, which means schools will be empty. And I can promise you that having a new school built with the latest HVAC will be a godsend and we inevitably will be dealing with a virus in the future that actually does affect children predominantly. As, as been shown earlier today, hand washing is a major way of preventing infections. And, and Heights is currently ill-prepared for, for any kind of irrigation, whether it be fire protection or for hand washing. By the way, the zoning boundaries for Heights and Hills completely overlap. So what exactly is a Hills kid then? If a new kindergartner starts at Hills, that is someone to, new to Hills as well. Or if someone moves into the neighborhood later in the year, are they to be treated as outcasts like the Heights children? What exactly is a Heights kid if the boundaries overlap and they're able to attend either school and they just register as a Hills student? Why is a Heights child riskier than any other kid in the school? And is the PTA going to petition to ban kids who travel to Disneyland or Legoland for rejoining their class? Those behaviors are a lot riskier than having Heights kids in their own rooms without Hills students mixing and with their own Heights teachers. Super spreader events to date for COVID nineteen have been from nightclubs and churches. If they're really concerned about risk, are they going to petition to ban kids of parents who went to a nightclub or an indoor religious function? Children of people in healthcare, people who protest, people who attend political rallies. Where does this end? These are ridiculous questions with no reasonable answer because the whole premise behind this petition is nonsense and mean spirited nonsense at that. But that's the Pandora's box they want to open. And I would like to call on the board to denounce this awful petition and close this haters box once and for all and all the natural subsequent petitions that could follow from this. We're in an era in which the other is marginalized enough and considering such a mean spirited petition denigrates our community and only compounds the pain our children already feel. It's a false choice the petition is presenting. We could have safety for our kids and our community while educating the children by following the state guidance on reopening, which is formed by science. Not by meanness, as we've seen in the excellent plan presented today. And the plan that will continue to evolve over time. This is Delmar Union School District after all, and I call on the board to remind us that by denouncing this petition and those that will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosanna Alroda Martin, followed by Arzana Siri.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I just have uh, a couple of questions. I, for clarification, um, earlier we spoke about the hazardous waste removal from Placework Incorporated that was almost sixty-five thousand dollars. I just want to confirm, um, if Chris can confirm if that's already happened or if that's in anticipation. And I know that um, I think it was Kathy Burks that said these purchase orders are a one-time expense. But there are some things that show up um, every month. So I see Baker and Wiki on here all the time. Um, but that's my one question on the hazardous waste removal. And it kind of leads me to, to my other question, which is going to be about demolition. And if the um, community closest to the school would be notified. Um, because we are aware that there is hazardous waste there. And we would like an opportunity to not be home if we didn't have to be in the area when the demolition happens. And then um, another question about the portables. I'm really happy to hear that um, more hand washing stations are going to be set up at the locations um, where additional enrollment will be. But I know this has come up several times. So I'm curious if these new portables will have fire sprinklers? And if they will have running water, because that seems to be a big concern for some of the parents when uh, they talk about the deplorable conditions at the current Delmar High School. So um, we're all looking forward to a new school. I'm hoping that it'll be one that will be environmentally friendly to the community as well as our children. Um, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Arzana Nisari, followed by Ethan Frank.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you so much to um, the, to the board for hanging in there. I mean, during the course of this meeting, I've uh, fed my kids dinner, did their bedtime routine, tucked them into bed. And now I'm hiding in the pantry to, to have this board call so they don't hear me. Um, so I know it's been a long meeting. I'll keep my comments brief. Uh, I just want to say that when it comes to this issue of this petition going around, I'm gonna trust the district is doing everything they can to protect our kids. I have no question that they wouldn't do that. So um, I would ask the district, maybe if they can just explain a little bit further to some of the folks who are concerned about the Heights kids coming in to their school. Uh, maybe there, there can be some more information given to those people to assuage their anxieties. Um, but I, I, for, I for one am going to trust, trust the district that they're doing everything they can to protect our kiddos. And I do have one favor to ask. And that is that when the district makes their decision and explains their decision, I would ask those folks who have organized that petition to just accept it and, and move on. Um, I don't want our Heights kids, or any kids actually, to start what's already going to be kind of a strange school year with um, any, hearing any unwelcoming whispers or feeling that they're not welcome somewhere. That's something that I wouldn't, wouldn't wish on any child. So I would just ask those, those parents who have those concerns, please contact the district, get your questions answered. But once the decision is made, do this really crazy idea and just move on. Um, because we, we have to remember that our kids are always listening to us. Even when we think they're not listening, they're listening. They're picking up on everything we say. And so again, I just don't want any children to start the school year hearing anything in the hallways. Um, be it from adults and passing conversations or from other children about, about them being there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ethan Frank.
Here, uh, this is Ethan. Um, I have two boys currently enrolled at Delmar High School, uh, with one entering first grade and the other uh, third grade. I wanted to briefly address the current COVID nineteen petition being distributed by a few Delmar Hills uh, parents. This petition apparently seeks to delay the rebuild of Delmar High School to prevent transfer of Heights students to satellite campuses at Hills and Ocean Air. Without a doubt, the transmission of COVID nineteen is a concern when school reopens. As a physician, I assure you that I do not take COVID nineteen lightly. However, the true risk to our children and their families is not yet fully understood. School openings in Europe and Asia are currently being monitored and studied. There is some data to suggest that children may not be as much of a vector for transmission as adults. If this proves to be the case, it would be a nice reassurance in uncertain times. Currently in San Diego County, children zero to nine years account for only two point four percent of infections. And ten to eighteen years account for five point four percent of infections out of over eleven thousand, six hundred infections thus far. No child has, fortunately, no child has died from COVID nineteen in this county. Statewide data, which is based on a much larger sample size, shows a similar infection rate for children. Perhaps children have fewer symptoms, hence there is less testing to capture infection. Or perhaps they're not the vectors we think they are as we see with typical respiratory viruses. This will need to be determined. To propose that the Heights kids will make contagion more likely at the Hills or Ocean Air is a bit insulting, even if that was not the intent. Further, it is not based on any data, but instead on fear and was put out before any consideration of what the district will be doing to follow health department guidelines. I do think we can do better as a community, as a community, uh, to protect the health of the community as a whole. We must work to figure out how to safely integrate the Heights kids into the satellite Hills and Ocean Air campuses. Consideration of, of the measures as already discussed on today's agenda for school reopening. In addition to consideration of installation of ultraviolet light scrubbing systems into shared air duct systems, outdoor learning as weather permits, and special precautions for children and staff who might be at higher risk for morbidity and mortality from COVID nineteen might be a good idea. Given the current pending litigation and vociferous opposition to rebuilding the Heights, I think that this, this petition is divisive and would propose that we instead focus on community unity and problem solving based on data and not fear or other motivations. Let's stop trying to build roadblocks and instead come together to build a beautiful new school, introduce exciting new school programs and educate, educate our kids in a safe and clean school environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board member questions? Um, can uh, someone address the question about uh, clarification on the hazardous waste removal? Um, maybe Chris, so just clarifying whether that has been removed or if it's going to be removed. And what is it?
The, no hazardous waste has been removed. I, I think there may have been, maybe we could have labeled it a little better because that, that truly, um, I kind of checked after the earlier piece with um, with some folks in business services and it was related to the SEQA next step. So we have not removed hazardous waste. I, I can understand and respect the concern about when demo happens and potential um, abatement of hazardous waste, uh, wanting to be informed. And yes, we will uh, notify of the time when we are um, starting demolition. So we, I, I can understand why, why neighbors would like to know when we are going to start the demolition uh, process. There will be an abatement process. There's already been some review of it. And so there will be a following of the steps necessary to ensure that any hazardous waste is, is abated and taken care of um, in an environmentally sound and safe way as well.
So Chris, just to clarify, those charges on that purchase order were for SEQA analyses and not for any hazardous waste removal?
Not actual removal, no.
Will we incur additional charges or will that purchase order include future waste removal?
Uh, Placeworks doesn't actually do hazardous waste removal. They do hazardous waste, they will do um, hazmat studies. Uh, the actual removal would be part of uh, actually item nine point two, which is uh, the Thought for BD's um, GMP. And so part of the initial increment one process would be the demolition. And then within demolition, you would include any uh, abatement and removal of things like asbestos or other items that, that may be found. So we've done an initial study. There are certain things that our um, Air America that did that study cannot look at, for example, um, piping underneath the, the school. There, there's no way for us to actually, so we, we note that. And then we know that they will be doing the testing of that and we'll have people doing testing on site to ensure that we are uh, removing anything appropriately and abating it appropriately.
Chris, I, I just, I expect that you guys will probably let everyone know in the community when their demolition will occur, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
There is a question. There is a question about whether the portables will have water?
The portables will not have running water. The, they, there are not water lines anywhere near the portables on the Delmar Heights, Delmar Hills campus. And so we did not include outfitting them with water at that site. However, we'll be adding sinks in a pretty nearby location so that there is hand washing ability. I will say that I can respect and understand comparison to fire sprinkler systems. The location of these is in a much less fire hazard area. However, I think to the COVID-19 and some of the concerns that also have been brought up in that respect, that is one of the reasons why we are looking to add sinks and add them in a location nearby for those classrooms.
Chris, doesn't the district architect have to approve all of these relocatables?
Yes. And in fact, they have approved the relocatables and the plan to install them.
And that would include necessarily an overview of the fire hazards and risks?
Yes, fire risks as well as ADA accessibility. And there will be some minor improvements we'll be doing to provide ADA accessibility, because codes have changed since the last modernization at Delmar Hills and even at Ocean Air. So items related to all of DSA review. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions before we move on to 9.2? 9.2 is the board approval of Resolution Number 202019, Resolution of the Governing Board of Trustees of the Delmar United School District to approve a final guaranteed maximum price for increment one of the Delmar Heights rebuild project and a preliminary guaranteed maximum price for increment two of the Delmar Heights rebuild project. Chris?
Thank you again. I have just moved Tim Berry, who's the Vice President with Balfour Beatty. I'm going to do a brief presentation to share information about the resolution and guaranteed maximum price. And then we do have Tim here as well, so that we have a representative from Balfour Beatty to be able to answer questions once we've shared some information. So I will pull up this presentation. And so this is again a resolution for the final guaranteed maximum price for increment one, and then a preliminary guaranteed maximum price for increment two of the Delmar Heights rebuild. The reason that we're doing this in two increments is because increment one has been DSA approved. It's a simpler piece of the project. It's the demolition and the basic site work and earthwork. And then increment two is the vertical construction, where we're actually building the schools, which takes a longer period of time to review. So once there is DSA approval for increment two, then we would come back for a final GMP for guaranteed maximum price for the increment two and the full guaranteed maximum price for the project. So for increment one, as I said, it's demolition and site work. There will be some pre-construction for increment two. There are some minor things that some of our subcontractors will be doing to prepare for increment two. And there's a hard construction cost of $6,864,815. For increment two, it is the vertical construction. And so there's preliminary hard construction costs. Again, preliminary, because we will need the DSA approval at $36,421,867. And this includes a DSA contingency of $500,000. And that is in there in case there are some changes that needs to be addressed between now and DSA approval. Should we not need to make changes or not need to make $500,000 worth of changes, then that contingency would come back to the district. So on the sheet that was attached to this item, it showed a couple of lines that I want to point out. So increment one, construction cost I just spoke to, increment two, construction cost. These are the hard construction costs. So combined, the hard construction cost is a little over $43 million. There are then some other costs involved in the guaranteed maximum price for the contract. And these include bonds and insurance, the overhead and profits for Balfour Beatty based on our contract, and then contractual contingencies for owner's contingency and contractor's contingency. This brings us to the full preliminary guaranteed maximum price. And I share this because we've talked a lot about a construction cost and then a project cost and soft costs being in between. The thing about a guaranteed maximum price is it includes some of the soft costs. So I have another slide to kind of talk about the overall project. So if we look at our increment one, and this is our hard construction cost, our increment two, this is our hard construction cost when you take out the contingency. So this is what right now that construction cost costs. We've been able to true up our soft cost numbers on outside of the GMP, based on, we know what our inspector of record will cost now because we approved that contract. We are fairly close to being done with the architectural services. So that number is pretty solid. And so we have a number of numbers that this has become much more tight. So right now, we see about $8.6 million in soft costs. And then other soft costs from the project are about $3.3 million in the bonds, overhead, and profit that go towards Balfour Beatty. And that gives us a project cost without the contingencies of $54.6 million. The reason I've broken this out is because we still have a number of contingencies at this point in the project. We have about $3 million in contingencies. These contingencies may be contingencies that we need to use. If we need to use all of the contingencies we have in this project, then we'd be at $57.7 million, which is a little bit over the initial budget that we had. If we came in at the middle of our contingencies, we'd be right out the $56 million that we originally had. At this point, we know that we will, barring some giant change, we know right now that we would have a project cost that would be between $54.6 and $57.7 million. The reason I've broken it out this way is just to show a little bit more of what our soft costs are related to the projects, what our overall hard construction cost is and what the project cost is. Because we've talked about this in a few different ways. And I wanted to try to share it in a way that covered the items that we've talked about, which are hard construction costs, soft costs, and then the total project cost. So our total project cost will be in the range of $54.6 to $57.7 million based on the contingencies and how much we need to use. And with that, the resolution is including increment one and the hard construction costs. It will include a prorated portion of the overhead and profit that goes towards Balfour Beatty. And then increment two, again, will be brought back to the board after our DSA approval for increment two. And that's at that point, a final GMP will be approved at that time. That then allows us to have a final number. There are a couple of things that I'll also point out related to cost. There were some value engineering options. And value engineering meaning some options that could allow you to cut some costs while ideally not making a huge difference to the project. And so these came in with the bids to Balfour Beatty, some on some retaining wall and some on some roofing that could potentially save some money for the district. We need to review these with architects and with Balfour Beatty. But there are some potential for some value engineering options that might take a little bit of cost out of the final cost as well. And so with that, I would actually, rather before I request approval, I would ask if the board has any questions. And I'd be happy to clarify. I tried to make it as clear as possible with looking at numbers, because we've talked about them a couple of ways. And I'd be happy to go back to any. And I also be, I know Tim has a great amount of experience and will be able to talk and answer questions that he may have. So I'm happy to bring back up any slides you might like or answering questions that you may have.
It would be great to sit here without the specter of a lawsuit hanging over our heads. And that lawsuit begs the questions about what do these numbers do if, for whatever reason, the construction is delayed?
So Tim and I were just actually talking a little bit about how long are those bids good for? And so, you know, we have the timeline now, but the prices that we got are good for 90 days. I mean, and there would be, we're looking at, potentially we're looking at things. And then, Tim, you may be able to speak a little more about what that means or what that looks like.
Yeah, we always try to put in our bid packages a hold date. And this one, at the time, we put 90-day hold just to lock in pricing and prevent escalation costs to kick in and material costs and COVID changes or what have you. But we also have the opportunity to send out to the successful contractors to see if we can extend that. We've done that in the past to hold their pricing. So, you know, I honestly believe we got phenomenal pricing considering the market and how inundated the market's going to be with all the new construction, the new campuses, San Diego State, UCSD, et cetera. We're excited about the project. We're excited about every subcontractor that's involved. They're all qualified subcontractors. So any other questions or concerns? We have opportunities to help, do whatever it takes. You know, the best thing is, sooner we get started, the less chances of cost escalations, et cetera. But, you know, the market may turn to the worst. I don't know. It's really out of our control right now. I think we mitigated what's in front of us today with COVID-19. We're out in front of it. We're considered essential. And we've been out in front of it across the United States. We have implemented policies and procedures well beyond other contractors in our industry. And, you know, so we're prepared to do whatever it takes to be successful in your project. The timeline is tight. In the past, we've delivered a lot of good projects at Delmar under some, you know, unfortunate situations, rain, floods, et cetera, and have always delivered. So if we do crunch the timeline, we have quality subs that have actually worked in Delmar that would step up the plate and do their best to make it work. So we're excited and looking forward to it.
Okay, we do have a speaker on this item. Roseanne Alvarado Martin.
I think, is that 10.1?
Yeah.
This one's 9.2, Doug.
9.2.
Oh, great. So we're fine. Other other questions then? Okay, thank you so much for taking the time to be here with us tonight. It's great to think about a project moving forward. And we appreciate your flexibility and willingness to work with us and with your subcontractors, and especially in light of this lawsuit that's hanging over us. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so now, let's see, we have to take action. So we'll need a motion to approve Resolution 202018, sorry. A motion to approve 202019 Resolution of the Governing Board of Trustees of the Delmar School District to approve a final guaranteed maximum price for increment one of the rebuild project and a guaranteed maximum price for increment two of the rebuild project. Is there a motion?
Actually, I have a question.
Sorry.
I apologize. But this resolution that we're passing is for these numbers. And according to Mr. Berry, if these numbers change in 90 days, will we have to pass another resolution?
So the first thing I will say is that we will be working to see if we can lock them in for more than 90 days. And this locks in the increment one. And so that is the demo and earthwork. Should it change your guaranteed maximum price to the higher, then I believe we would need to come back to the board.
I appreciate that. Sorry, Catherine.
That's a really good question, Doug. Okay, so motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. We'll call a vote. Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Woodin?
Aye.
An aye for me. The motion passes. 10.1, board approval Resolution 202018, Resolution of the Governing Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District to approve agreement for architectural services with Lion Akkus. Back to you, Chris.
Thank you again. So thank you again, President Hoppern, members of the board, and superintendent clerk. So this is a contract for architectural services. And it is with Lion Akkus. And it's for our Delmar Hills modernization. A couple of points, and we brought this with other architect contracts, that this will commit to the CEQA process as we've committed with our other architect contracts. And we'll also approve the contract for Lion Akkus to provide the architectural services. A little bit about Lion Akkus. Lion Akkus is a firm that has actually designed Earl Warren Middle School, Pacific Trails Middle School, and a number of schools. This is Dyre Kelly, which was a kind of future forward-looking elementary school that they completely remodeled. And they've done a fair amount of work in looking at what they talk about, 21st generation learning, looking at indoor/outdoor connections. And they have some solid staff that does both the interior design work and then community work. And so they are also one of the oldest firms in the state, founded by California's first state architects. They do have extensive experience in K-12 across the state. And as I said, the next gen, I misstated the way that they stated it, but the next gen learning and community engagement really directly aligned with the MUSD. And we're a big part of them submitting the bidding proposal. So as I mentioned, Pacific Trails, Earl Warren, and Dyre Kelly are great examples of work that they have done, both in our area and then in general across the state. A few next steps, just as we're talking about this project. Should the board approve Lion Akkus? We would schedule a kickoff meeting with Lion Akkus for July of this year. We'd then conduct district planning in July through September, really looking at scope recommendations. We have a budget of $10.3 million of hard construction cost and looking at between $13 and $14 million of project cost. And so looking at the scope that we currently have in our facilities master plan, recommendations from the architect firm, talking about timeline and construction so that we can come to the community with some ideas and some information, and then go through a community engagement process where we take their input and make adjustments based on that. So we would see going through and sharing recommendations and ideas, using that to then build into some updated design ideas and current feedback, and then move into some final design steps. We will be updating a timeline. So this timeline and dates are really subject to change based on the initial timeline planning. But we will be coming to the board and to the community with a set timeline so that we can go through a set process and allow to then keep with the timeline moving forward when we get into the ideas of our construction down the line. So we anticipate being able to do the community engagement in the fall. But we will come back with a little bit more information on what that timeline looks like based on the ideas from Lion Akkus, the needs we will have, and being able to ensure that we can get input from the Delmar Hills Academy community. And so with that, we would request approval for Lion Akkus. I'd be happy to answer questions. And I know we do have a public speaker on this as well.
Should we take our public speaker then and then come back for questions? Okay. So that's Rosanna Alvarado Martin.
Rosanna, you're muted. There you are. I made a change to my commands. My question about Lion Akkus is that I didn't see a dollar amount attached to it. And so I'm wondering what the board is approving without any dollar amount attached to it. And just for clarity, I did ask the board members prior to this meeting the majority of the questions that I brought up tonight and more. And I was told that I should bring it up during the board meeting. So I'm sorry if I've taken up time, but these questions weren't answered privately. They wanted to be answered publicly. So that's my question. Just more transparency, please. I'd like, I looked at the documents, I read the documents, but I don't see any dollar amount attached to this architectural services with Lion Akkus. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Chris, can you address the question of the cost scoping for this project?
I was trying to hit unmute and it didn't want to work for me. Yes, so the cost for this, this is a modernization. And so as Yes, so the, the cost for this, this is a modernization, and so as per the initial proposals that we got when we created the pool, the, we requested sliding scales. So sliding scale for architectural services on new construction is one level and then on a modernization is another. In this case, the modernization sliding scale starts at, it's really done in 500,000, then a million, then four million dollar increments. So as you cumulatively cost more, the percent goes down. And the total cost for their proposal was 1.15 million. And it was commensurate and in the same level as the other firms that we requested proposals from.
Okay.
What other firms did you look into?
We received proposals from R and T and Baker, both members of the pool.
Okay, how, how would this project be affected if there were delays in the Delmar Heights rebuild because of this lawsuit?
It would depend on the scope and phasing. So I think we've talked about, we would ideally want to be able to do summer work, and most likely then we'd split it over two summers. It would depend on the, the work that would be done over summer. So, for example, if one summer's work was roofing and HVAC, that could be something that potentially is done and doesn't have an impact. If it's something that we had concern about timeline, or we, we had issues with spacing, we might, might have an impact. But I would anticipate that at the earliest, we would do some work over the summer of 21. If we did work over the summer of 21, it would have to be something that could be planned and DSAT approved and done some sequel work fairly quickly. So there is the chance that we can look at something like that that is a more simpler piece, a simpler piece, not more simpler, a simpler piece that could be done in summer of 21. If that's the case, it would probably be something that is less impactful, which then look at summer of 22, which I'd always anticipated we'd probably be getting in the summer of 22. And we would anticipate that even should something is dragged out for a long period of time, we would anticipate that we would have students off, that there would be no impact on that campus in the summer of 22.
Okay, other questions? This firm does great work. I mean, seeing Earl Warren, which always gets great reviews, and Pacific Trails, I mean, I, I think you couldn't really ask for better architect for a, a project like this. So thank you for bringing them forward. Are there other questions, or should we move for approval? Do I have a motion to approve? Okay. Doug, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So this is approval of Resolution Number 202018, Resolution of the Governing Board Trustees of the Delmar Union School District to approve the Agreement for Architectural Services with Lion Akis. Roll call vote, Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Woodin?
Aye.
An aye for me, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now we will move to 10.2, Board Review and Adoption of the 2020-21 Proposed Budget for All District Funds with Kathy Berks. I'll just stand by while we get Kathy.
Can I just ask you, Erica, like, what are we looking like with speakers?
Yes, we have two, we have two speakers on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Right. Good evening, President Hopper and Dr. McClure and board members. This evening, I would like to present the proposed 2021 budget for all funds for your review and approval. Next slide, please, Chris. In this presentation, we'd like to revisit our vision and mission statement, our budget development, the first read, which is what we brought to the board in May, versus the proposed budget adoption and any changes that may have occurred, our local reserves requirement, the general fund summary, multi-year projection, and looking ahead and also reviewing other funds. So as we look at next slide, as we look at our vision and mission statement, which really guides everything that we do in this district, our vision is the unrelenting pursuit of the extraordinary school experience. Next slide. And next slide, and our mission statement is to ignite genius and empower students to advance the world. So through our budget development, we, our budget determinations are, have been made in accordance with the goals of District Design 2022 and also our Local Control Accountability Plan. We strive to maintain a fiscally sound reserve balance for a community-funded school district and a continued commitment to proactive fiscal planning. We also strive to communicate the budget to all stakeholders. Next slide, as we review the first read versus the proposed budget that I bring you this evening, we look at our revenues and we have $160,000 difference. Next slide. The difference occurs, basically, we are, had anticipated a basic aid reduction, so we had a reduction of $117,000. We also are now budgeting for some federal funding through the CARES Act, and we are recognizing special education equalization funding through the CEALPA. At the time that we were preparing this budget, we still not had, did not have any finalization on a lot of items, so these things might change. So for example, with special education, originally, the equalization amount was 660 per ADA, it dropped to 645, and we budgeted at 600, but we just found out it came up to 625. So first interim will be very telling as to, you know, what we are finding out now and will be hearing in the summer. So as we go to expenditures, again, we are looking at the difference between the first read for May and the proposed budget, and we have $160,000 difference. And what that difference is on the next slide is our certificated and classified salaries and benefits. So we are budgeting at 179 FTE for general education certificated teachers. This is up by two, and we budgeted an additional two teachers for our distance learning model. We may need another four to six additional teachers, but of course, we're waiting to see exactly how that comes out, and then we'll be able to reflect that at first interim. We're also recognizing the reduction on our CalSTRS and CalPERS and board contribution rate. We are recognizing the addition of a speech and language pathologist age and also a night custodian. Next slide. In our operating expenditures, we are increasing our materials and supplies due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We will be experiencing a higher cost for transportation due to social distancing, and we are recognizing an Apple lease, a three-year lease, that we will be purchasing iPads for primary grades. Chris talked about our summer projects, which we are recognizing in our capital outlay, and we had that offset from operating expenditures. And we know that we're going to have, to support our cafeteria fund. So as we look at our ending fund balance, we are projecting to be at a balanced budget with a 14.9 million, nine million budget for ending fund balance, and which puts us at about an unrestricted reserve percentage of about 22.5%. Next slide. So we are required to, to look at and to explain anything above the 3% minimum reserve balance for economic uncertainties. So we have approximately $2 million for basic aid stabilization, reserving for any increase in pension costs, our other post-employment benefits, and, and unanticipated future obligations. We are reserving for our science curriculum adoption. We have our 15% minimum reserve of about $9.5 million. And also, we are setting aside funds for our school number nine for Pacific Highlands Ranch when it comes in operation. Going to the next slide is the general fund summary. So when we look at, you know, our LCFF sources, which is 86% of our budget revenue, that includes our property taxes, our EPA funding, and also our minimum, minimum state aid. Next slide. Our expenditure summary is, consists, as you can see, of almost 85.7% is in salary and benefits. Next slide. So when we look at our multi-year projection, we have some assumptions that we have made, and we decrease the, the revenue property tax projections, showing a 2% increase in 2021, a 3% increase in 2022, 2023. Our average daily attendance, we're using the numbers from Davis Demographics, and we average about 97% of that enrollment. So we are at 3965 in 2122, and 3944 in 2223. We estimate our step-in column increase in salaries to be approximately 2%. And also, we show our increases in our STIRS and PERS contribution. Now, in this multi-year projection, we had anticipated a basic aid reduction of 10% of our minimum state aid, and so from what I hear now, that may not come in place, so that may change at first interim too. And with looking at our multi-year projection on the next slide, we show revenues respectively at 64 million, 65 million in the following year, and 66.5 million in 2223. And our expenditures going from 64 million to 65 million to 66.8 million. Next slide. So what happens is in 2021, we are anticipating a, a balanced budget, but we're seeing a slight deficit occurring in 2122 and 2223. This is based upon the assumptions we have now, but we will continue to take a look to see how that changes. We do look at the, the, the fund reserve percentage, so we're still in the 20% range. And so looking ahead at the next slide, we, and going to the next slide, we continue to monitoring, you know, what needs are related to COVID-19 pandemic. So, you know, we started off that children did not need to wear masks. Now they're saying, you know, it's, it's a possibility. We're looking at face shields. Jenny went through that on her presentation as to types of expenditures we might have. We're looking at staffing for distance learning, purchase of additional materials supplies. We are looking at fee-based programs, which is our after-school program and early child development center. We await the final state revenue collections and potential state budget revisions, which will be occurring next month. We continue to monitor our enrollment, our staffing projections, and our contributions to our restricted programs. So as we look at our other funds, our cafeteria fund 13, we show a, no, no reserves there. We're, we're having to contribute to, from the general fund, a projection into next year about 42,000. Our participation has, has decreased, and we still are not quite sure how that will run next year. So that's always been a challenge, the cafeteria fund. As we go to Fund 14, we contribute a half a percent of our property tax revenue for deferred maintenance. We anticipating making a donation or a contribution into this fund of 275,000, which would leave an ending fund balance of about $1.4 million. Our Fund 17 for Special Reserve, this is where we are setting aside funds for our Pacific Highlands Ranch School, and with the contribution of approximately 700,000, we will have an ending fund balance of 1.5 million. Our Fund 21 is for our Measure MM Series 2019A. We show expenditures of about 47 million. We had recognized the revenue in 1920, and now in coming in 2021 is where we'll start spending down those funds. As you can see, the beginning fund balance at 51 million, ending fund balance of nearly 4 million. Our Capital Facilities Fund, we show some revenues net increase to this fund balance of 43,000 with the ending fund balance of 794,000. Our Fund 40, our Special Reserve Capital Outlay, we anticipate revenues of about 65,000 with the ending fund balance of almost 6 million. Our Fund 49 for our CFD, which is combined for 95-1 and 99-1, we, and in 99-1 is where we are using those expenditures for our Pacific Highlands Ranch School. So we will show a net decrease of about 21 million with the ending fund balance of 23 million. Our Fund 63, Enterprise Fund, so if you recall in May presentation, we were anticipating approximately 1.2 million deficit to the, to this fund, which would leave a fund balance of 445,000. We are making some budget adjustments, reductions to this fund in order to be able to, to maintain, not have to make a contribution from the general fund. And our Fund 73, which is our trust fund, and we, it's basically interest earned on here, so it's only about $400 with the ending fund balance of 34, almost 35,000. So with that, if I, if you have any questions?
Go ahead, Juah, or Catherine?
Yeah, Kathy, there was mention last month of, of reductions of two teachers and, and of 3.6 STEAM. Is that incorporated into here?
So what happened with the two teachers, once we started to do our analysis, we decided to, to bring those two teachers back to increase the budget by two teachers because of the distance learning. Now, I'm not quite sure if that's enough at this time, but once we have more of an idea what that looks like, then we'll be making those adjustments if we need to increase, and we'll, and that would be reflected at first interim. So the reduction in two teachers is no longer there, we've increased it. As for the 3.6, and that was in the STEAM plus, that reduction is still in place.
Thank you. Catherine? Okay, so then I would want to ask the question, is it possible to use reserves at this point then, to fund, to keep funding STEAM plus teachers?
So the reserves really are for one-time expenditures. So when we take a look at, you know, when we say we have the science curriculum, we know that that's a one-time expenditures. The reserves, it cannot, and you shouldn't, it cannot be used for ongoing expenditures because then you just continue to spend down the reserves and you never build that back up. So it's, it, I would not recommend that occurring. I would recommend for a one-time expense that is needed for that to happen, and I know that we have always valued of having a prudent amount of reserve for any type of emergency or anything that might be necessary.
I think the rest of that, Kathy, has to do with enrollment also, and it gets back to, I think, President Hopper, you brought up, you know, when Shelley was presenting about STEAM plus, that will, you know, the district will come back and talk about, as we continue to evaluate the program and plans for this next year, what is the district going to be coming to the board for, saying that we need for this plus STEAM plus program? So part of that is need, the design of the program, as well as enrollment. So I think that's all part of, to add to what Kathy was saying too. that's all part of, to add to what Kathy was saying too.
And, and in the past, we have used our reserves to maintain small class size too, because we had, we had to spend down the reserves too, at, during the Great Recession, so.
But, oh, go ahead, Catherine.
If there along down the line is some kind of an order that stipulates that the class sizes need to be capped at a certain level that's less than what they are now, is that a potential use of these reserves?
I think staffing all around is, sorry to jump in, Kathy, but really good questions that we're thinking too, as to, you know, as we look to the next year, whether it's regarding the pandemic-related expenses with general education, distance learning, like you just brought up, how many students, in addition to the STEAM plus, those are all questions that we have as well, that will become clearer as we go through the next few weeks, and then come back to you with what our recommendation is. And Kathy, if you had more, I'm sorry.
No, absolutely. We just don't know what distance learning is going to be like and what the staffing will be. So obviously, that would happen, because that's something important for the education of these students, and that would be a potential spend down on the reserve.
And then I have just a question, Kathy, about the cafeteria fund. Can you just kind of touch on that a little bit about, just explain a little bit more why it's not being funded, it looks like at the level that it needs to be, or there seems to be a discrepancy in funding?
Yes, um, so, part, in part, is that the, the amount that we receive from the state and federal is not sufficient to cover the cost of the lunches. And so it becomes, it becomes difficulties to maintain, which we are, will be addressing in the future by being able to build a centralized kitchen. Right now, we don't have that ability.
So, yeah, so right now, we're just giving from the general fund to support, to match or balance it out, and, yeah.
For, for a long time, it had been able to sustain, but this past year with the pandemic and not getting the revenue in that we had before, it has depleted that reserve and has put that where the general fund has to contribute.
Okay.
And ba- basically, the, the, the regular lunches that parents pay for help subsidize the shortfall from the state, because how much they give us is less than what it costs to make the quality lunches that we're providing.
Yeah, I'm comfortable using the funds that we're receiving from our property tax sellers to, to fund the school lunches. I think that's a good use of our funds, so, yeah, I just wanted to get a little bit more insight into that.
We have a couple, oh, go ahead, Scott, we have a couple speakers.
Well, I can kind of address what Catherine was saying. With the cafeteria fund, with the choice lunch, as expensive as they are, fewer and fewer people were buying them over time, and like Erica was saying, that was subsidizing, you know, you had, you had to spread that out over the cost of the lunches. As fewer people buy it, and the cost goes up, fewer people buy it, fewer more. So it's a, it's a self-suffilling prophecy that you just have less revenues coming in year over year. And with the COVID, I believe they were keeping staff, or there were some expenses that we weren't, weren't getting revenue that we also had expenses. So this year was a, was particularly dangerous year for that funding, my, my understanding from, from Kathy. My, and for the one-time use, I know I had mentioned about the STEAM plus, and I think that's where Catherine was going as well. I was mainly saying, if the revenues did not come in from the Education Foundation that to maintain what that type of level for STEAM plus for an additional year, I know that those positions that are being decreased are mainly due to enrollment, and from what we would have to contribute based on teachers' contracts. And so that, if there's fewer kids, there's fewer teachers required for STEAM plus, and that's what that decrease, my understanding, is, is in place. But keeping a STEAM plus program to what it was, because of any coronavirus impacts to donations, is what I was going with on the last board meeting, with the, with the first read of the budget. And I think some of these are one-time expenses, and you can, Kathy can maybe address these to, to me. So you're adding a few more teachers into the budget in here, and I think that's to deal with coronavirus-induced issues, or whatever we might, we're gonna have to have a little bit higher staffing ratios than we would normally, normally have, is why you're having more teachers in here. And I assume going forward, are those, are those same staffing ratios projected out in the multi-year projection, or are we going back to what our normal staffing ratios would be, and still incurring that deficit?
So we would go back to what would be a normal staffing based upon the enrollment that we have, and so that's why we will do, once we know what's happening with enrollment coming into this new year, we're gonna do another look at it and be able to project based upon what has happened this year, but we had based it upon the demographic study.
Okay, so that's, so we're still, we'll be running a structural deficit based, in the next two years, based on our current assumptions and going back to normal staffing levels, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, and based upon the amount that I'm projecting for property taxes, and I also anticipate being able to, to get more information in regards to that too, because I'm just not quite sure exactly how the pandemic will affect property tax revenue.
Okay, so if property tax revenue comes back to where we, it's anticipated it was in the past, then we should be fine in terms of budgeting in future years, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay, let's get some speakers. We have Nancy Swanberg and Eric Benke. Go ahead, Nancy. Nope, you're muted now, sorry. Um, go ahead.
Dr. McClure, President Halpern, and members of the board, I come before you tonight speaking on behalf of the entire district's STEAM plus science team, and we're all present tonight. The contract for the science teacher at Sycamore Ridge has not been yet renewed for next year. By renewing the contract now, in June, and not waiting to make a decision about it until August, is in the best interest of the district. The Board of Trustees has the opportunity and the means to strengthen the science program of our district. Here's our reasoning. In the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, the science team faces the added challenge of providing for distance learning. As it stands now, seven teachers face the daunting task of meeting the needs of eight schools, in addition to an unknown quantity of distance learners. To add to the complexity, Delmar Heights will be at two sites next year. Keeping the team intact offers the value of consistency as we prepare for the road ahead. Every time we get a new science teacher, we have to spend time supporting that new teacher at the expense of moving the program forward. A consistent team will ensure that our programs move forward with innovation, even with the challenges ahead. Consistency is also key for the students. Sycamore Ridge has been seen repeated over, sorry, Sycamore Ridge has seen repeated turnover of the science teacher position. There have been three science teachers in the last six years. The district has been moving toward a co-teaching model with science teachers planning and teaching with classroom teachers, as Shelley mentioned earlier. This collaboration requires the science teacher to be familiar with the classroom teachers and their teaching. The existing science teacher at Sycamore Ridge has both the familiarity with her site and a multiple subject credential in addition to her science credential. Having a multiple subject credential is a plus when integrating the study of science with other subjects. The next generation's science standards are complex and detailed for each grade level, often requiring specific equipment and materials for each grade. This makes it particularly demanding for one teacher to implement well at multiple sites. It is our understanding that the district has the financial means to change this outcome. We know there are substantial savings from not having students at the school sites during shutdown. This savings is currently earmarked to add to our already large reserves. A global pandemic is exactly the kind of rainy day the reserves exist for. What better use than to keep a highly qualified teacher? Our district consistently scores high on state science tests. The value of science in our community cannot be overstated. School number nine is looming around the corner in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. With no end to the pandemic in sight and distance learning a viable need, is it now the time to secure a qualified science teacher with experience? If we wait until August to bring this position back, our current science teacher will have had to find a new job, and much of the talented pool of potential science teachers will already be snapped up by other districts. We, the science teachers of the district, urge you to allocate funds to save the Sycamore Ridge science teacher position now, and keep the district's STEAM plus science program strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Benke.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Eric Benke, Sycamore Ridge twenty twenty Teacher of the Year. I'm speaking tonight to urge the board to temporarily support our STEAM plus program and help save it from further cuts by taking some of the almost one million dollars in XX savings from this year that would be added to our reserves, and put it towards saving, in particular, our STEAM plus science and other programs. The goal is that Shelley outlined tonight for STEAM plus will not happen with less staff, only more. At last month's board meeting, it was shared that we would be losing three points stick, three-point-sixteen plus positions next year. Item six point two four on tonight's agenda shows a loss of seven STEAM plus teachers, which does not include the one-point-six technology specialists who are going back into the generalized classroom. That is a total loss of eight-point-six STEAM plus teachers. These teachers directly impact all of our students on a daily basis, sometimes for seven years continuously. Is this really what is best for kids? At this time, no new STEAM plus positions have been posted for next year. It's getting late in the game to attract the best candidates. What we have seen posted, however, are several new positions in administration and district office personnel. We have seen an assistant principal position, a new coordinator of curriculum instruction position. On tonight's agenda, there is a new job description for a curriculum and instruction program assistant, and a new TOSS position, collaborative teaching specialist, which also falls under curriculum and instruction. If the board is concerned about the budget and running enrollment, why are we adding administrative and district office positions, which do not directly impact students on a daily basis? Is the board more concerned about adding administrative positions than retaining quality teachers? Of most importance is to reinstate employment for Crystal Clover, science specialist at Sycamore Ridge. This is a decision that is best for kids. Crystal has strong relationships with all of our almost six hundred Sycamore Ridge students, their families, and the entire staff. Consistency is key for our students, especially considering current situations. Next year, Sycamore Ridge will be the only site without a full science, full-time science teacher. Why? Won't we need more science teachers rather than less with the addition of online learning, and then the reopening of Delmar Heights in twenty-one, twenty-two, and school number nine the following year? We are losing an excellent educator in Crystal Clover. Board members, you consistently tell us how much you appreciate teachers, and we are so thankful to hear that. It's time to show your appreciation with action by supporting all STEAM plus teachers and temporarily supplementing the funds raised by our hard-working DMSEF during a pandemic, and preventing any unnecessary layoffs at this time. Thank you so much for your commitment to our incredible district.
Thank you. Um, okay, great. Okay, so Holly, can you just review, I'm not sure if there was a person to do it, but the staffing changes in STEAM plus, the reason for the staffing changes, and what your ideal staffing numbers are, and then specifically with regard to science at Sycamore Ridge or district-wide, what is the change in the science staffing, and how does that impact the kids as far as much time?
I can't really add at this point anything to what Shelley already discussed as far as the, the stage that we're in with the overall planning for next year and STEAM plus and those ongoing collaborative efforts that we're engaged in. So, you know, I hear what everybody's talking about, and completely, I think we all agree on the value of STEAM plus and the value of the expertise of having specialists, which is why we all support it in a number of ways, and why our parents support it. And so, as we move through, I mean, those people will continue to be involved. Shelley talked about the advisory, she talked about that we're continuing, she talked about the impact of distance learning and how STEAM plus is involved with distance learning is, is in its, in its planning stages, as well as the impact of a decline in enrollment. So all of those things make it so that I'm not able to address exact numbers right now. I think we're clear about the different variables that are playing into it, and obviously, this is, this will be an ongoing, you know, item to be addressing with you as a board, because it's specific to the budget too. So I think it's one of those things that Kathy addressed when she announced the budget last, the first read last month, that because of where we are with the pandemic also, we will see changes in first interim also, based on, you know, just the fact that all of this is impacted, not only by, you know, decreasing enrollment, but also by the pandemic. And yes, we will have science at every school, and no school, I think one of the big things that when Shelley talked about the objective, one of the major pieces of the objective is equitable, all students, and regular access to, to all of the disciplines. So, you know, that said, you can see where that would not differ from school to school if that really were the objectives that comes to, you know, to, to be, so, in reality.
But it sounds like you're saying that you don't need the additional science teacher to cover science in the district. And so, if I enter the numbers, we're going from eight science teachers to seven science teachers, but you expect to be able to cover your science program with those seven. Is that, do I have that right?
We anticipate that that could happen, yes. I mean, based on enrollment, based on where we are with the planning stages of that, yes.
And if you felt that you needed more science instruction, would you be telling that to us now, or at first interim? I mean, are you holding back from asking for support for science, or do you feel that you have what you need?
No, I think Sha, I think that based on, you know, what we've got right now in the plans, we feel confident that we will be able to have a robust, you know, experience for all of our children in a robust STEAM plus program. And so, if, if, if that were to change, we would make a change, you know, as, as quickly as possible. For example, if we get a huge increase in enrollment over the next thirty days, we would absolutely act on that immediately, and then make that adjustment, which then would be shown when Kathy presents first interim. So it is evolving in a sense, and there's, there, we would be, we would be including that in the plans, and that would be part of what Shelley was talking about today, when she, when she presented the STEAM plus piece.
I know that Shelley had mentioned the staffing still, you know, is something a work in progress right now, but is it, is it accurate to say that there are more STEAM plus teachers being, being removed beyond the three-point-six that we had talked about?
Is Shelley still in the meeting? I'm afraid, I'm worried if we, if she got dropped off somehow. She can talk more specifically, because she's been part of the advisory leading it. There she is, she magically appears.
I'm glad that all of you appeared, because my screen was black, and I was afraid to leave the meeting. I could hear you, but I couldn't see anything, so. So to, to go back to your question, I think, was the question, do you feel, do we feel confident that we have enough science teachers, or does it have to, I, I'm sorry, if you could just refresh me, I was listening but couldn't. Gwah asked a specific question about numbers. If you could repeat that question, Gwah, that would be great.
I think that that's also another good question. I think Erica was asking, does, or do you feel comfortable with the amount of science teachers that we have? Because it sounds like we're lowering it from eight to seven. Is that gonna be enough to cover the amounts for the district? That was her question. I asked, is it accurate to say that the numbers of, because one of our speakers indicated that the, the numbers of STEAM teachers may be more than the three-point-sixths that, that we had heard about before, and I was wondering, like, is that the case, and, and what, I know staffing is still under, is, is still in progress, but, you know, so they said that you can illuminate some of that information for me, that'd be great. illuminate some of that information for me, that'd be great.
Okay, I, I, thank you. I, so we have, let me just give you an example. We have seven, um, science teachers. We, we had eight, um, with nineteen, twenty staffing. We have two music teachers for eight schools. Um, and so, when we look at how do we ensure that all students have access to all five content areas? Does, we then need to start to look at, well, if we fill positions, does it make sense to fill a music position and increase the music opportunities for our STEAM Plus program? That, that really has limped along at many, many schools, um, over the years. There are difficult positions to fill, and yet we say we're committed to that as a district, but what happens when we try to spread three teachers among seven schools, we have, we have teachers who have, you know, forty percent at one school, twenty percent at one school. And it starts to, to not be, um, the quality program that I think we, we would all want it to be. So, um, it's, it's necessary for us to look at our STEAM program as a whole, and that's part of the work that we're trying to do as we look at staffing and as that fluctuates. Um, and get to some, some more clear numbers, um, along with what we can afford and how we can afford to staff our program and move it forward from there. So, um, it's, it becomes difficult, and I think that that has been one of the challenges of our STEAM Plus program is when we think of, um, content, we think of specialists, we think of, um, a whole person in, in every content area. And when you have smaller schools, you don't need a whole person in every content area to provide every, um, child with that experience and exposure to STEAM Plus content. So, um, you know, that, that's what I would have to say. I'm not trying to be evasive in any way. I'm just trying to say that if we're looking at how we create an equitable program among all eight school sites, we have to begin looking at some shifts among the content areas and, um, where we're going to allocate our staff as a whole STEAM program versus by content area.
It, it sounds, it sounds like part of what you were saying was that you're reducing the amount of science kids are getting in order to allow them to have more music. But maybe I misunderstood that. Can you clarify?
It doesn't necessarily means, mean a reduction in science. It, um, because in many situations at some school sites, we're over, if, if you were to look at a STEAM schedule and if you were to create a schedule where every child had a thirty to forty-five minute exposure once per week in each content area, if you did that, at a few of our schools in the district, we are overstaffed in science. I feel it, it's taking a look at those percentages and taking a look at the program and saying, okay, well, what do we, that's, that's not to say that the science teachers were sitting around saying, what, what do I do with my time? But how do we look at the program so that we can have science field days, science Olympiads, rich lab experiences for students? Because that's not happening at all of our schools. And so, it's, like I said, taking a look at the whole program and how much science do we need? Once we're clear about the objective of the program, we want, what we want the elements to be and then staff according to that.
Can, can I, can I bring, can I, can I make a comment here now with, uh, uh, with the science? As a scientist, I, everybody knows that I definitely want a strong science program in here. I brought that up many, many times throughout the years on the board and, uh, my understanding of this really is, uh, it's a balance between amount of time in the classroom and the amount of time that we're pulling kids out. And you only have so much pullout time, as Shelley mentioned earlier in this STEAM Plus program. We can't be pulling kids out uh, for each of these individual, uh, modules. And what suffers are some of the, so either music or art or something, if you're pulling them all out for science. My understanding from what I'm hearing is that the science program is probably going to be enhanced because they're going to be doing it without the specialists, but you're also bringing that into the classroom. And so, you have time in the classroom where they're going to be taught science with the regular classroom teachers plus the science that you're going to have outside. So, you're going to decrease the amount of time they're spending outside in science in which you fewer teach science specialists to be able to do that task. And then you're able to supplement more music and art teachers for that pullout. Am I reading that correctly, Shelley?
You are. And, um, and I would also say that, um, we, we would want more of our specialists, but not necessarily like you described, Scott, not more pullout time. If we could have our specialists and have them in co-teaching models and enhance with science, for example, with a code, with a, a lab experience, that would be awesome, along with music and art at every school site. So, um, right now with the limitations we have both financially with health and safety, uh, the health and safety guidelines and how we need to rethink our program, it, it doesn't mean that we're trying to eliminate and reduce the STEAM Plus program uh, across our district. It means that we have to look at it as a whole. And if we are really committed to all parts of the STEAM Plus program, how can we do that?
I think too, to get back to Jiwa, if I rem, if I understood your question, um, I think it was related to also the overall numbers and I heard the number, um, by, um, the speaker talked about as eight, and it's not eight. I mean, we've talked previously about three point six, three point eight. That is an accurate, um, arena to be in when we're talking about what, you know, if there are last related to anything we're talking about, what would it be? So, we're not looking at a number of eight.
Okay, yeah, because I, I mean, it, it sounds like he was asking for a, basically kind of like an accounting, you know, like, it sounds like there was a number that's, uh, on the, on the, uh, six point two four or whatever. There were certain numbers that, that looked like they were decreased. Um, and he's, I think they're trying to figure out as to where the accounting is, is, you know, coming back. If it's just, if there's a number of them leaving, then and, and we've heard three point six, then where is that the, the filled, the numbers coming back?
Well, if there's some confusion there or some missing information, we can, we'll definitely follow up on that. So, thank you.
I, I will say, I, I actually anticipate we are going to have to hire STEAM Plus teachers, but we may not need them in the area of science. We definitely need music teachers.
Thank you, Shelley. Yeah, it wasn't a matter of like specifically about the, the science aspect. That was, uh, the kind of the fire question for Erica, or Erica had, um, but yeah, it was more of like the question I had was more just about the accounting of the, of the teaching. Thank you.
And can I ask, uh, when would you anticipate, uh, putting those, um, uh, say, music teacher ads out? I guess because one of the speakers was saying there are no spots out yet, no, uh, uh, no ads out for bringing in STEAM Plus teachers.
Right, well, we just, um, finalized our, uh, staffing, what we think it will look like for distance learning today. Um, we need to, to go back, double check it again, sections, who's going to be where. And once we do that, it will give us an idea, okay, where do we, where do we need music based on sections, et cetera? We hope to do that very, very quickly and then, um, get the positions posted as soon as we can. I would say early July, we would shoot for being able to do that.
All right. And, uh, like I said, it sounds like you're trying to enhance the science program by having more of that science brought into the classroom uh, and then supplement it with labs and, uh, the pullouts in, in the science. So, the science program would get enhanced, uh, in, in this process and not, is not really a, a reduction.
That is our intention.
And we're excited about new science curriculum, which we're not even really talking about right now. So, there's, I think a lot of things are going to happen with science. Great.
Thank you. I mean, there clearly are a lot of complications with implementing this program and you're in the middle of a shifting model and a pandemic. So, you know, we just, um, we know that there are a lot of constraints and I think that you've heard the board say that if the constraint is financial and this is something you can think of as a one-time, one-year cost because it's pandemic related with the reduction in STEAM Plus funding from the foundation, that, you know, we certainly want to hear um, what it is that you need. So, um, just want to make sure. I, I hope I'm accurately reflecting with the board. Uh, thanks, but, but that's to me what I heard tonight.
I agree with that statement, Erica.
Yes, that's what I've been saying too.
Okay, thank you, Elise.
Okay, so then we need a motion to, well, if there are any more questions, otherwise we need a motion to approve the, um, budget. Item ten point two.
I'll move to approve the, uh, budget.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call vote. Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
And it's aye for me. The budget passes. Okay, we are at, I don't, eleven point one. Board approval, resolution number twenty-twenty-six dash sixteen, notice of layoff, classified employees, reduction in, uh, force due to lack of funds and/or lack of work. So, Jason Romero is on the line and he will tell us about that.
Good evening, uh, Board President Halpern, uh, Superintendent Dr. McClurgie and Governing Board Members. Uh, the resolution today is to address programs that are funded through our enterprise program. So, our enterprise program is consisted of two programs, our enterprise fund, excuse me, is consisted of two programs, our after-school program and our early childhood development program. Both of those programs are, uh, funded through, uh, the community and through the, the uh, community members who use those services. Uh, those programs during COVID nineteen over the last three months uh, have remained, uh, fully staffed with employees, yet not bringing in revenue, uh, to support those programs. So, we were able to open up the ECDC a month ago and start, uh, attracting in a, a little bit of revenue uh, from that. And our after-school program, uh, is running the summer camp, as you heard today, uh, with about half the capacity of what we've had in the past, yet still sustaining, um, a level or, uh, even, um, fund for that, that summer camp. Uh, the resolution today is to address the, uh, needs of the program going forward. So, the program started off, uh, this school year with a one point six million dollar reserve and due to the COVID crisis, has spent down one point two million of that reserve. So, uh, it's, it has about four hundred thousand dollars left, which is close to about two months of salary. And what we need, uh, today is to plan for contingency in case we don't, uh, return to the levels of, of enrollment that we've had, uh, historically over the past few years. So, we're not talking about a large reduction in staff, but we're talking about a reduction in a few staff members uh, that in case we don't have the numbers to support these, uh, the, the program, that we're not overstaffed, if you will. So, it would be what would be the typical staff for one early childhood classroom, which would be, uh, two teachers and two aides. Uh, so if, uh, right now, the program last year had about a hundred and fifty students and we have eighty-eight, um, I think maybe ninety students that have enrolled for the early childhood program next year, we do think that over the summer, we're going to get a good group, a good number of, uh, families returning to the program, but we do need, uh, a safety net in case that doesn't happen. Um, and this resolution allows for that. Similarly, uh, our after-school program, uh, we're going to need to look at just making sure that we have contingencies in place in case that, that that program doesn't return to, to, to the full numbers that they've had in the past. Both of these, uh, are sixty-day resolutions. So, employees will continue that are, that are, are, are employed during the summer or that are under benefits, will still get their, their benefits and salary over the next sixty days. Um, and that will give us a better opportunity to look at what we need, um, as it gets closer to the start of the school year. So, uh, this is a, a resolution for the layoff of these employees. Um, but we, as we get closer to August and especially the first week of August, when we hit strong numbers of how many people will be participating in those programs, we'll be able to see if we need to recall, uh, to these employees.
Okay.
Catherine? Yeah, can I just ask, what's the benefit of having this resolution now as opposed to waiting?
So, what happens is a sixty-day timeframe. So, uh, classified employees are mandated under Ed Code and Labor Code to be, uh, eligible for employment for sixty days from the time of action. So, if we were to wait till August and take action then, we would start, uh, severely deficit spending into the reserves and we really get close to, to, uh, basically bankrupting the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund, because it's a community-funded, uh, program, a community-funded fund, cannot be supported by our general fund. We have board policy that specifically states, uh, that it'd be paramount to give the public funds if we were to take the general fund, which was, you know, money, uh, bestowed upon the district to educate K through six students and use that money for other students outside of those grade levels. Some of those students not even being, um, you know, students that would be going to Dunmore schools, but could be community member schools and, and, uh, community members, uh, students or, and children and even employees' children. So, uh, the program, there is board policy that states that the program needs to be self-sufficient. And if we're not able to take this now, we really run the, the, uh, the chance of just, you know, becoming bankrupt in that, in that program.
Essentially, we have no program if, uh, you ran out of money on here. You, you, you wouldn't, it wouldn't exist. Uh, but, uh, yes, you need to, uh, have the sixteen-day notice, Catherine, uh, just trying to address your question, to be able to, uh, work with the needs. If, I mean, we can, we saw tonight earlier with the summer camp programs and things that, that the numbers aren't there to support full staffing and we've blown, you know, almost what eighty percent of the, of the, of the reserve that's in this enterprise fund already. So, we have to take some action, uh, tonight. Uh, we can't wait until July or August. You know, but these are the things that, uh, that need to happen.
And we, we are looking really closely at this and I'm working closely with our, uh, um, program manager for the after-school programs, Justin and Brigitte Blazey, who's the director of our early childhood program. Uh, we've, we've had countless meetings to ensure that our numbers, um, are, are conservative on favoring the employee side. We're not overestimating here. We're not, you know, we're not thinking that, that, you know, uh, we're noticing, you know, uh, in this case, it's a, uh, six employees. Um, but the, the reality is that if the numbers, uh, don't come even back even more, we may have to bring a forward resolution come August. This is just a, a little safety net that we need to have to make sure that these programs are sustainable.
So, so my understanding of this is that it essentially is like its own standalone business, um, and then we, you know, we need fees to come in to, to sustain this business. And currently, the fees are gone down because there's not many students that are using it. And when demand picks up again, you may consider, uh, hiring these same workers again, um.
Absolutely. All of these great points, Jiwa, and, uh, I, I thank you for mentioning that. These employees, all of them are entitled to positions that they qualify for if we were to reopen business. So, uh, for thirty-nine months, uh, if there's a position that's open, they're entitled to that position. So, we can't hire somebody else. They're guaranteed that position. These employees also all will qualify for, you know, unemployment benefits, you know, that are, are pretty robust these days. So, there should be minimal physical impact. Um, and the minute that we real, realize we need, you know, these employees back, we reach out to them to make sure that they're.
Do they come back at the same level, um, that they were?
Yeah, they come back to the same level, same seniority, you know, um, they, they don't lose any years of service or anything like that. Yeah, they, they retain all of their employment rights. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, then we need a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty sixteen, notice of layoff, classified employees, reduction in force due to lack of funds and/or lack of work.
I moved.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Don.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jiwa. Um, roll call vote, Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
Aye for me and the motion passes. Okay, item twelve point one, preliminary items for the July twenty twenty regular board meeting.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I just had a quick thing really quickly. Can I, for these really super long meetings, is there a way that we can somehow split this out next time to like make it shorter somehow, like maybe do like an interim meeting in the middle somewhere? Um, I, 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 because I, I, it's hard for me to last like the six hours. I'm not quite the same I was when I, you know, five hours ago.
Right. Well, um, you know, we haven't quite gotten to the eleven o'clock, uh, deadline where we have to either shut the meeting down or vote to extend. That has rarely happened. This is a particularly long meeting, uh, but we can certainly look at, uh, agenda options in the future if we have, um, long meetings like this.
Thanks, Erica.
If it's, if it's any indication, it's kind of a little bit of evidence of what oh, is going on in the district. If, it all feels enormous, including this board meeting, Jiwa, thanks. We agree.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for all the work that you're doing. Very much appreciated. I, I know that this is a microcosm of that.
This meeting tends to be a little bit longer too, uh, with the budget stuff in it, so.
Yeah, we'll make the July meeting really short. Um, so six and a half hours in, um, we're at item twelve point two, adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Jiwa, is that you?
That's me.
Sorry, sorry, going back to twelve point one, um, that was just, is that where we have an opportunity to put items that we'd like to discuss on, in the July meeting? That's correct, right?
Sure.
And you had mentioned on your board report, putting, um, um, some kind of discussion about, um, racial equality, social justice, what the district's doing, what community can do, what parents and students can do to take part in that. Um, so I just wanted to second that as, as something that I'd like to see on the next agenda.
And Holly's already got that in the works, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so Jiwa has moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second. After.
Roll call vote. We've never had a third. Um, Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Mock?
Aye.
Member Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
Aye for me and the meeting is adjourned at ten fifty PM. Thanks, everybody, and have a good night.
Night.